Good evening. We'll call the Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting for January tenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Happy New Year, everyone. First, we'll start with meeting minutes. We'll take them together, meeting minutes from the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meetings. Commissioner Francis moved to approve. Commissioner Harrison, second. Commissioner Francis, any comments?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Who? I need to catch who made that.
Francis first, Harrison second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison, anything?
No additional comments. Good.
We don't have any members of the commission. Or do we have Commissioner Leahy online?
No.
Okay, so it's just the five of us. Commissioner Corcelio, you'll be sitting in today. At least for Commissioner Levy, who's not here. Commissioner Bremen, Vice Chair Bremen will be here. Five, ten minutes. Any other comments from the commission? Minutes looked good to me. Ready for vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
The six hands passes unanimously. Next item, new applications for recommendation to public hearing. One ninety Sherman Street, special permit application of McKenzie Real Estate Group pertaining to the construction of a garage in the Center Design District. Mr. Went.
I don't really have much to add to that, Mr. Chairman. This is a commercial property that's going to be converting to residential, but it is in a commercial district, and the detached garage does require a special permit, which does require a public hearing.
May I have a motion? Commissioner Harrison?
Second.
Move to public hearing?
I'd like a motion for a public hearing.
Second to Commissioner Ford, was it?
Yep.
Any comments? Public hearings required?
None for me.
Move to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
See, six hands passes unanimously. Next is old business. I'll note it that it's on the agenda, the zoning regulation amendments. I will forego going through it all, but as we did in our last meeting, this was tabled to January twenty-fourth, so just note that for the record. Moving on to six thirty-six Kings Highway, special exception application of Monica Harrison to establish a daycare in a portion of an existing building in the design commercial district. Mr. Went.
Mr. Chairman, the current... I'm sorry. The applicant seeks to establish a daycare use in a portion of the second floor space of an existing commercial building. If you're familiar with the building, it's on a slope site. It's two stories in height from the street side, but one story from the back on the parking lot side. It's the rear parking lot side formerly occupied by a veterinarian that this applicant is seeking to occupy. There are seventeen existing parking spaces. The daycare use is expected to occupy five of those spaces, while the other tenants in the building, which who are a small accounting firm, on the upper floor and a kitchen design studio on the lower floor are expected to occupy collectively another five parking spaces. The space will be as large enough to be licensed for up to eighteen children, so it's not this is not a large facility, eighteen capacity. There's a fenced area proposed for outdoor play within the parking lot, which will occupy one or two existing spaces. The Health Department has reviewed the plan and conforms or confirms that it meets with their requirements. That's all I have at this point. Subject to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion? Commissioner Ford?
Motion to approve.
Second to Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Ford?
The application, I think it's a good application. I think it's good use of the space. The owner of the property is on board. It seems like she has a successful business already up and running and is going to just move it from one spot to another, so I don't see any reason to deny this application. I ask my fellow commissioners to approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Ford. I think it's a great use of the space. You know, it's refreshing to see the owner of the building be so accommodating to the tenant, and it seems like it's a very thriving business, and I wish them well.
Any other members of the commission?
Yeah, I too thought it was a good application. I think they have I think they've shown they have sufficient parking. I don't think their traffic will be an issue, and struck me that it met the other except other special exceptions criteria, so I too support the application.
We put this to a vote. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Six in favor passes unanimously. Next item is three, four, five Reef Road, special permit and coastal site plan application of Phoenix at three, four, five Reef Road Corp. pertaining to a nine-unit residential development in the Neighborhood Design District. Mr. Went.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. This current site has been vacant for several years with the former location of Hanson's Flower Shop and Greenhouse. The applicant proposes a total of nine dwelling units within three proposed buildings. Each building is a three-story townhouse-type construction. The site is in the Neighborhood Design Business District. The applicant received a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals in July to allow for residential occupancy on the ground floor and a hundred percent residential occupancy. You may be familiar, the same developer is currently building on the adjacent parcel a similar nine-unit proposal in a single building adjacent to it. The zoning regulations require two and a half spaces per unit or a total of twenty-three spaces. There are eighteen garage spaces and six surface spaces provided for these proposed units. The site plan includes an additional twelve parking spaces, which are required pursuant to a lease agreement with the adjacent southerly property. This dates back to when the subject parcel was approved for medical office building that was never constructed, that was proposed to be occupied in conjunction with that adjacent southerly property, which is now mostly a vacant office building. So overall, there's thirty-seven spaces on the site, but twelve of those, they have to leave available should the adjacent southerly property need the use. It's not foreseeable that they do at the moment, but their deed restriction going back when this subject parcel was approved for medical office building requires those spaces to be provided. So there's thirty-seven spaces in total, twenty-six of those available for these units, and twenty-three is what the standard is to be provided. There are no coastal site plan concerns. However, the applicant does need to provide additional details on the final construction plans to ensure compliance with section thirty-two of our regulations, which are flood protection section. New concrete curb sidewalks and driveway aprons are proposed, similar to what they have constructed on the northerly adjacent property. The considerations for a special permit are found in section twenty-five point seven point seven, and is the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such characters to harmonize with the neighborhood, to accomplish a transitioning character between areas of unlike character, to protect property values in the neighborhood, to preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and to avoid undue traffic congestion. That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I understand Commissioner Ford, you'll be recusing yourself?
Yes, that's right.
And Commissioner Braun will be abstaining as well? Gives us four, which I still gives us the quorum we need, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, having said that, may I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Francis? Your mo to approve?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. That's okay. Move to motion to approve by Commissioner Francis, second by Commissioner Corcelio. Thank you. Commissioner Francis?
I feel this is an excellent application, meets our criteria, and it's a good use of the property, which has been in disuse for a long time, so I totally support it and hope my fellow commissioners do.
Commissioner Corcelio, anything to add?
Agreed. I think it's well-designed and contextual.
Just the two of us. Anything to add?
I have nothing further to add.
Okay.
No, I approve the application as well. It's a good use of the space. Could certainly be much more dense, but we, as we saw at the neighboring project, I find it to be well-designed, certainly harmonizes with an area, I think it will protect property values, will maintain and enhance the beauty of the area. As Commissioner Francis said, it's a long vacant property for a long time, and this will be a needed upgrade, and I don't foresee any traffic issues. So for all those reasons, meeting the criteria of the special permit, I would also support the application.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, I assume, Commissioner, that the recommended condition of approval is part of your motion?
Correct.
Yes.
So, the motion on the table is to approve with the recommend recommended conditions of approval by staff. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
See four hands, passes unanimously. Next item, under zoning compliance, is coastal site plan. One thousand one, one thousand fifteen, South Pine Creek Road, coastal site plan application of one thousand one, South Pine Creek LLC pertaining to construction of a new two-family dwelling in the B zone. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. This site is a consolidation of two lots into a single parcel totaling fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven square feet. The existing dwelling is proposed to be demolished and a new two-family dwelling is proposed. As discussed at the last meeting, there are some staff recommended conditions of approval. I'll just articulate those quickly again. Number one, the native plantings that are proposed to be installed and maintained in accordance with the coastal planting plan, with the revision to move all of those plantings outside of the one-year title line, as recommended by the Connecticut DEEP. Two, should future sea level rise cause additional seasonal yard flooding, future flood protection controls such as seawalls or revetments are prohibited on this site. So that's a condition to make a future owner aware that a structural flood control solution would not be permitted here. Number three, the architectural plans will be in shall be in conformance with our section thirty-two of our regulations with respect to flood protection. Number four, soil erosion and sedimentation controls installed and maintained during the entirety of the construction project. And number five, they need to make a slight revision to the site development plan per recommendations of our engineering department to add an inspection high-level overflow to the detention system at the rear of the site and ensure that the site is graded so that runoff does not affect adjacent properties. As you recall, this matter was tabled at our last meeting. There was a request to have some input from our Conservation Department. We did receive a an email from Conservation Director Tim Bishop dated December fifteenth indicating that he had reviewed the plans. Mr. Bishop confirms that the wetlands involve their title and not inland, and also further indicating that he has reviewed the recommended conditions of approval and finds them to be appropriate, and that the proposed activity does not pose any adverse effect on adjacent lands managed by his department. So that was the report we received from Mr. Bishop, as requested. I have nothing further at this point. Subject to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Braun?
I have a motion to approve with the conditions stated in the CAM report, coastal site report.
And by staff. I think there was a few others from staff.
It's the conditions that Mr. Went just made.
Yeah, from CAM report, from staff, from everyone, I guess. Second from Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Braun?
I was the one who asked for wetlands or for conservation to have some input on this, because I was concerned, being that it's in a coastal area. So I do have reservations, but I do feel like we've got input from the Conservation Director, and there won't be any adverse impact. There's no jurisdictional theory of them, but also there's no adverse impact on town-managed coastal space, which is also within conservation area of expertise. But I just do want to point out that I know at some point we're going to have a climate resiliency commission. I don't know if it's been established yet, but I do feel like when we start doing coastal projects, we should have also some input from them because of the DEEP report that came in on this, where they point out new residential development in coastal areas poses potential flood hazard issues due to the dangers of flooding and the inability to provide dry access for emergency personnel during a storm event. So while we review it, climate change is going to impact this going forward in the future, and obviously development is permanent. So the DEEP points out that with respect to sea level rise, data developed for Connecticut by the Connecticut Institute on Climate Resilience shows that the sea level in Connecticut could raise as much as twenty inches by the year twenty fifty, and that flat low-lying areas of the coast, such as the subject parcels, will be impacted, and they will be inundated. And that, you know, makes you wonder if that last condition where or that condition where if you have a flooding problem, you're not going to be able to add structures to protect your house if that's really going to continue once, you know, catastrophic events happen. So I do think we should look at it more globally as these applications come in. But for this application, I am recommending approval because it satisfies all the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun. Commissioner Ford?
Yeah, I agree. I don't have much to add, you know, just in terms of the comments that are relevant to this application. I agree with the other comments. I don't have any firsthand knowledge of, so I won't make any comment on that. So, you know, so I second the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Any other members of the commission?
I support the application simply I think it meets the criteria, complies with our regulations and DEEP criteria as well. So with that, Commissioner Bremen?
Nothing much to add. I just want to thank Commissioner Braun for our comments. I think that the scrutiny of CAM applications in the flood hazard zone is going to only become increasingly important as the effects of climate change become manifest.
Any other comments, or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See six hands, so it passes unanimously.
You're up to seven.
Oh, am I up to seven?
Yep.
Sorry. Seven. Excuse me. So, that ends the compliances. We'll move on to public hearing, starting with twenty thirty-one Reading Road, request of Peter Attorney Peter Ambrose for a hundred percent release of a twenty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-five thousand seventy-eight dollar bond pertaining to subdivision improvements. Good evening, Attorney Ambrose.
Good evening. Just be careful, that's very sensitive. I'll be. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Naomi and Alan Gill, who put on for this property. The improvements have been completed to the satisfaction of the Engineering Department, and I believe the bond should not be released. Half of the bond has already been released.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions from the commission?
Do we have a little more detail on the?
It was a new house that was built in twenty thirty-one Reading Road. Took a while.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty thirty-one.
No, the address is twenty thirty-one.
Oh, twenty thirty-one.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
But the construction is complete.
Yeah.
All the subdivision requirements have been complied with. I've confirmed that with Engineering and with Mr. Went, and I believe it's now ready for the final portion of the bond to be released. There's twenty-five thousand dollars left.
Any other questions from the commission? So I'll go over the process of public hearings in a second, because I'm going to guess, but I'll ask anyways. Is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this application? Seeing no one in the room, any member of the public that's joining us remotely or through the telephone wish to be heard? If you're on your telephone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Any member of the public wishes to be heard? Hearing none, we'll end the public comments portion, and I assume you have nothing further to add.
Mr. Chairman, no.
Yeah, I'll close the public hearing on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, members of the commission.
So, next item I will next items I will call together, the zoning regulation amendments, application of Spot On Fairfield LLC to amend section twelve point four point twelve of the zoning regulations, and twenty-two sixty-nine Post Road, special permit application of Spot On Fairfield LLC to establish a veterinary hospital, including dog boarding and daycare in the design commercial district. So, just for the members of the public, you just kind of got a quick sample of what's public hearing with the previous application. The applicant will present its initial presentation. Commission may ask questions. At the end of their presentation, we turn it open to the public for public comments. For people in the room first, people who are joining us remotely. After we go through public comments, well, I'll ask public members to come up, essentially where Attorney Knopf is right now. State your name, your address, you know, you'll certainly have as much time as you would like. We just like to keep comments germane to the issues, and, you know, as quick, certainly as efficient as possible, but you will have your time. At the end of public comments, the applicant will have his time to rebuttal. During public comments, you will not be able to ask the applicant questions directly, but the applicant will be listening to questions that are posed by the public, should they be posed, and normally the applicant is wise to answer those questions as the commission is hearing them as well. I will say this just out of experience. I've been on the commission for several years now for content, well, I'll say potentially contentious matters where passions may run high. I have found, in my experience, applause in support doesn't often help the, how would I say, the decorum of the proceedings. I'm not saying one way or another what to do or what not to do. It's just my experience that applause for support of your position while against support while against the positions of others, again, not potentially helpful to the decorum of the proceedings, but that is just my experience. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney for the office at one forty-seven Broad Street in Milford, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Spot On Fairfield LLC, which is the tenant of the property located at twenty-two sixty-nine Post Road. I think we all know that this site has featured a variety of automotive sales uses in the past, most recently a Hyundai dealership, and that, of course, included auto repair. There's several, I think there's seven repair bays located in the rear of the building. The building is just shy of seventeen thousand square feet, and the parcel is just under two acres. It's approximately eighty thousand square feet. The property is located in a design commercial district. The rear portion of the property is zone Residence B, but all pet-related activities will be confined to the commercial portion of the site. As you noted, Mr. Chairman, there are two applications before this evening, an application to amend section twelve point four point twelve, referring to veterinary hospitals, and the second is a special permit application. With me and who you'll be hearing from momentarily is Dr. Philip Putter. Dr. Putter is a veterinarian and a principal of Spot On Veterinary Hospital and Hotel in Stamford, and Dr. Putter is committed to offering the same full array of services that he offers in Stamford here in Fairfield. The Fairfield Hotel and Hospital will be state-of-the-art in all respects, not only in how their clients and their pets are treated and cared for, but more relevant for this evening, Dr. Putter is also committed to making the location, the Fairfield location, state-of-the-art as to how it will interact with the surrounding area and our neighbors. And that's an important word when it comes to Dr. Putter, and I think his earnestness and his sincerity will shine through momentarily. Dr. Putter is committed to offering the most professional, highly skilled, cutting-edge, and convenient care to his clients and their pets. He is committed, with the property owners, to vastly improving this long vacant site with significant improvements to the building facade and interior, landscaping and lighting. He is committed to the broader community by bringing this much-needed service to Fairfield and creating approximately fifty new jobs. I shall see from our plans, but more importantly from Dr. Putter himself, he is committed to taking every possible precaution to ensure that he's not just a good neighbor, but a wonderful, respectful, responsive, involved, and caring neighbor. For that reason, Dr. Putter, members of the staff, the property owners, and I met with about ten neighbors in December at the building. Dr. Putter certainly understands that neighbors will have legitimate questions about the operation of his hospital hotel, and he wanted to meet with them face-to-face, to listen to them, answer every question, and forge a respectful relationship. I also note that Attorney Attorneys Proto and Crusaden, who are are taking a position with this application, were also in attendance, because he also wanted them to hear about all the things that make Spot On difference from the typical veterinarian or dog care facility. Following that meeting, Attorney Proto, who is representing some neighbors, asked for a copy of the sound study that we referenced at that meeting, and I provided that to him, and he also asked a series of follow-up questions about specific operational details, and we're happy to answer those questions, and those, the questions and answers are in the packet I just handed out to you as Exhibit A. And for the record, I also provided a copy of this to M-line and to Jim for the record, and also to Attorney Proto. And I don't think Attorney Crusaden is here this evening, but I will make sure that he gets a copy as well. After the neighborhood meeting, and after reading through the neighbors' questions that we received from Attorney Proto, and reviewing the sound study, and we read the comment letters that were submitted into the record by some residents, Dr. Putter and I had a series of conversations, and we decided that in the spirit of good faith, transparency, and being respectful to our neighbors, we would propose certain additional requirements in the proposed text that would memorialize the precautions that we are gladly shouldering. We wanted the public, the neighbors, this commission, and P and Z staff to know that these are items that just weren't being depicted on our site plan or in our narrative, but they were binding commitments that were enforceable by the town. The revised version also candidly limited the number of locations where such facilities could be located, because we know that there's a concern by people in other neighborhoods as to whether or not such a facility could be located near their homes. Specifically, we made six additions that the commission, because when acting on this regulation amendment, or any regulation amendment, you're acting legislatively, you can accept, reject, amend, or use as a starting point for further amendments. And I'll discuss the additions in a moment, but also in an effort to show our good faith and to make the process more efficient, after we submitted the proposed changes to M-line for the record, I also emailed the proposal to Attorneys Crusaden and Proto. This being land use, of course, no good deed goes unpunished, and it was alleged by Attorney Crusaden that I created a notice issue. Nothing could be further from the truth, and here's why. This is absolutely no different than if I were to ask for a twenty-foot front yard setback regulation amendment where forty feet is required, and then later I decide, you know what? I only need thirty feet. Well, that's fine. I can always pull back. What I can't do if I'm asking for a twenty-foot setback where forty is required is to go to ten, and that's what all the additions that we proposed did, made it more restrictive. So not only do we make the regulation more restrictive, everything that we included in our revised proposal could have been added by this commission while we discuss this application at any point during the hearing, or even during your deliberations, because each of them is more restrictive. The fact that we offered these changes for everyone's consideration before opening the hearing is absolutely, absolutely immaterial. So solely for games machine purposes, however, Attorney Crusaden has chose to make this an issue tonight. So for the record, and to be a hundred percent clear, we have absolutely no concerns about going forward with the application with the proposed changes in the regulation amendment. So let's talk for a moment about what's in those revised regulations.
Attorney Nuff, though, is your application, I mean, are you going on the original with potential with these potential suggested revisions?
Yes.
So the application real, the application is on what was originally submitted, but in the course of your dealings, you're you've given us potential revisions for our consideration, but your application is under the originally submitted?
Correct. And as I am the commission chairman, we may come up with other changes. We may come up with other restrictions to help ease some concerns. That is the whole deliberative legislative process. Obviously, this is not an administrative process. This is not a subdivision or a site plan. You have broad discretion as to how you draft this regulation.
No, and... No, and your-
And do so at any time.
Your point about being more restrictive and within the footprints is noted, because we do that regularly, but I just wanted to make clear, because as it may be brought up later, your application is based on what is originally submitted.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if you turn to Tab B in the hand I just provided to you, this gives you the original language and then with some additional precautions in brackets. So the first one, the applicant shall demonstrate all reasonable efforts to prevent any unreasonable offensive odor, including ineffective protocol for race removal, that's essentially the same as the original. The second one is an addition, the applicant shall erect a minimum eight-foot-high solid fence around all outdoor play areas to prevent excessively loud noise. Well, already, we have another change, because what our plans will show you is that the fence we're proposing is actually ten feet tall and not eight feet tall. So you can do whatever you want with that, you can make it eight, you can make it six, you can make it ten. We also have the addition number three, any outdoor play area shall be located no less than fifty feet from property containing a residential use in a residential zone. Now, this is important, because it's been pointed out, of course, that dog daycare may not abut a residential district. Our point is that the distance requirement to gather with the fencing requirement is the functional equivalence of that barrier or that preclusion of having a dog daycare directly abutting a residential zone. All these other safeguards that we're proposing, along with that distance requirement, is a better safeguard for neighbors than simply a straightforward prohibition of dog daycare directly adjacent to residential uses. The fourth one is no pets shall be permitted to be outside other than within the fenced play area, and we'll stop there for a second. One of the questions the neighbors asked is, will staff people be walking the dogs in the neighborhood? The answer is no. The only time the dogs will be outside is when they're getting into or out of the cars that they come to the facility in, or when they're in the outdoor play area. They will never be outside in any other location on the entirety of the property. Second, that same provision says, and no pets shall be permitted to be outside unattended by staff. So in the responses to Attorney Proto, we laid out sort of the daily schedule. So early in the morning, a staff member may take one or two dogs out, you know, per person, you know, for their morning potty break for those dogs who, you know, don't have the ability or choose not to be able to do that inside, and the same thing in the evening. So they'll always be attended in those sort of earlier morning and later evening hours. But during the day, there'll be sessions of several hours when more than one dog can be outside, but they're always attended by staff. There's never a time when the dogs are outside, left completely unattended, so that if there is any sort of disruption, the staff member can intervene and correct the activity. Number five, no outdoor pet activity of any kind shall be conducted between the hours of eight-thirty PM and six AM. Again, as you'll know from our responses to Attorney Proto, those earlier morning and later evening hours are exclusively for dogs being taken out for potty breaks, not for any outdoor play area. The outdoor play occurs in the middle of the day, under very specific limitations. And six, such use shall be located on a parcel containing a minimum of one and a half acres and within a building containing a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet. If you look at your packet at Exhibit C, there's an email from our Economic Development, person Mark Barnhart, who has confirmed that there are no other properties that are located that satisfy those criteria. So to the extent someone may have a concern that someone may be able to open a veterinary hospital with additional pet services in the DCD zone in proximity to their neighborhood, that's not the case. This is the only property that would fall under those rules. So those are some of the suggestions that we can talk about during the course of this hearing, in terms of helping to mitigate both our neighbors' concerns and the concerns of others in other neighborhoods. The last thing I want to discuss before getting to Dr. Potter is the comprehensive plan. And I'm sure we'll be discussing this more, maybe not just tonight, but also at the next hearing as well, but we all know the comprehensive plan is not your P O C D, it's your regulations and it's your zone map. It is our contention that the regulation amendments is indeed consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you review the list of uses permitted by special permit or special exception in the Design Commercial Zone, there are many that have the potential for far greater impact to neighbors over a much longer-
Hold on, we just got enough feedback.
Okay. We've got our shopping-
Yeah, I just- I don't know.
This is pretty sensitive, we'll just move to-
[inaudible]
Do a test? Is that good?
Yes, better, thank you.
Okay, sorry. All right, so it is our contention that the proposed regulation amendment is indeed consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you review the list of uses permitted by special permit or special exception in the Design Commercial Zone, there are many that have the potential for far greater impacts to neighbors over a much longer span of the day than the proposed hospital hotel with all the precautions that we propose, particularly on a lot of the size. So what are some of those uses? Indoor theaters, hotels, indoor recreation or gyms, obviously these can operate in the evenings and throughout the night. Every type of restaurant is permitted in the DCD zone, including drive-throughs. Restaurants can have music, outdoor dining, dumpsters, hours that go late, seven nights a week. You can have package stores, you can have gas stations, auto repair, automobile sales. As I noted, there are existing garage space facing directly south toward the neighbors, and you can have retail stores, including drive-throughs. I well remember the many nights we spent discussing Walgreens in Southport, where there was also a large group of neighbors opposed to that. So this type of facility, with the precautions that we're proposing, is every bit consistent with those other uses, with the exception that our hours are going to be much more limited than those other uses would have. We are aware, of course, that a dog daycare cannot abut a residential use, but first, as I note, the precautions that we offer are equal to or better than the simple standard of not abutting a residential zone, because you could have an unintended fenced-in dog run operating all day long with absolutely no supervision by any staff member.
Let me say that again?
So the precautions that we're offering are equal to or better than the prohibition of having a dog daycare abut a residential zone. Between the distance requirement, the fencing, the hours of the day, the supervision, that's far better than a simple preclusion where you could have a dog run completely unattended, operating whatever hours of the day or night, that is located, you know, perhaps one property away from a residential zone.
Well, what would that, I don't understand, the dog run would just be operated, I wonder what use would that be there?
All right, so the point is, and perhaps I'm sort of getting ahead of what the opposition is going to be claiming, but in the DCD zone, dog daycare facilities are permitted, but they are not permitted to abut a residential zone. We've heard from the neighbors and from Attorney Proto, of course, that because, and from Attorney Crusaden, that because dog daycare is not permitted to abut a residential zone, that somehow that that makes our proposed use inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
My point is, is that you need to look at our regulation amendment holistically and look at the precautions that we are proposing, because they are far different than what you could have in a typical dog daycare, where you'd simply have a fenced area that is unattended, unsupervised by any staff person, and the dogs are just left out there for longer periods of the day.
But that's what I'm not understanding, that being left out, unintended, all the times of the day, are you saying that's currently allowed?
There's no prohibition against it.
But there's no, but there's no language that allows it? No actual designated use that that's allowed?
Well, dog daycare is permitted in the zone. There is no definition, there are no criteria, so I don't know how a operator may choose to use that language to his or her benefit. All I'm saying is that dog daycare is the only limitation on dog daycare, not by hours, not by sound attenuation, not by anything other than not abutting a residential zone.
Okay.
I think that this is, our proposal provides far more safety than the dog care facility regulation that's currently in place.
And we have, the dog daycare regulation in place applies to this, where are we, Design Commercial District?
Correct.
Same as where we have Dogtopia, non- trademark? Not different district?
Correct. I believe there's-
Transitive-
Oh, T O D, okay.
I guess it's a different zone.
Yes, okay. So, okay.
Okay, so second, there are several veterinarians who are operating in Fairfield that also offer boarding that have none of the precautions that we offer, including Attorney Crusaden's clients, Southport Veterinary Center. That property is also in a split zone, and its outdoor area for dogs is actually in a residential zone.
And do you know if that is, they're allowed to board because of medical reasons?
No, as a matter of fact-
Or because of daycare?
I quoted in behind Tab E screenshots from their website, and by the way, I'm not doing this to disparage Southport Vet Center, I'm sure it's a wonderful place. The point is, they offer boarding, they also offer medical boarding. Their property is located in a DCD zone, the rear of their property is located in a Residence B zone, just like ours. And if you look at Google Maps, there is one small grassed area where dogs need to be taken out in order to relieve themselves, and that area is in a residential zone. So if we're looking at the comprehensive plan, we need to look at what is currently permitted in the regulations to determine whether our proposed regulation is consistent with what's taking place currently under your regulations. I would note that Attorney Crusaden's letter talks about all the other uses that we're going to be proposing, such as training and grooming and all those things, all the same things are available at his client's location.
And do you know, I mean, you've mentioned that the Southport vets go outside to relieve themselves, they go outside for extended period of time for, I guess, playtime or whatever, exercise?
Don't know, but I guess the point is, is that you have these pet-related uses, veterinary related uses, and they also, and they all offer boarding, and so my point is, is that our proposed regulation amendment is consistent with all those other uses, is consistent with the fact that there's other veterinarians in town who are operating boarding facilities, but they're operating these things with absolutely no precautions. You can open a veterinarian hospital, and you can also offer boarding, but there's nothing to say whether or not those, whether a dog that is being boarded by a veterinarian can be outside, whether it has to be attended or unattended. So my only point is, is a legal one and a regulatory one, which is our proposed regulation amendment, is entirely inconsistent with your existing regulations, because we are offering far greater precautions than your regulations currently do. And I would also note that there are two other hospitals, Highway Animal Hospital and Engelberg Christie Animal Hospital, both located in Design Commercial Zones, all abutting residential zone land, and all offering overnight boarding, and not just medical boarding. It's all available on their websites. I only provided you the one with, from Southport, but I'd be happy to provide the others.
What were the other two again, names?
Highway Animal Hospital and Engelberg Christie Animal Hospital, I think they're both over on Kings Highway.
Now, because the boarding, the overnight boarding, I would think is, well, I think the main, I'm going to guess, that the main issue is going to be that the dogs are allowed to be outside for extended periods of time. So are, do you know if these other hospitals, facilities allow the dogs to be outside for the times that I believe, at least in your, at least in the noise impact, there is a schedule?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'll refer to that at least, but do you know if these other places allow the dogs to be outside for the times that are similar to what's in this proposed schedule?
I don't know, I mean, looking at Google Maps, it appears that, other than Southport, I didn't see any specific outdoor fenced areas, but again, my point isn't to compare us to them, is to compare the regulations that govern them and the regulations that we're proposing that will govern us.
And that's, I understand where you're going, but, so that's a regulation thing, but I also want to understand the practical uses that are being used.
No, understood.
Because for example, if hypothetically, they're not outside for the extended times for it all, it's just outside to relieve themselves or whatever it is for a minute or two, then your point is that, well, the regulations don't allow it, do allow it, but maybe according to their minds, they're following the regulations because it's not allowed to be outside, or at least not specified to be outside, then they can't be allowed outside. So there is, I want to understand the practicality of what the other uses are, because maybe that has some bearing on interpretation of the regulations.
Right. I mean, candidly, veterinary hospitals are permitted in the zone, dog daycare is permitted in the zone by special exception, and with the exception of the not permitting the dog daycare to abut a residential zone, there's no limitations of any kind. Again, my point is, I don't want to overstate this.
Well, no, I understand that, but it's also by, what, special permits or a special exception, right? What are we under?
The dog daycare is by special exception.
Okay, so you have to go under those criteria.
It is by special permit.
Harmonize, you know, all the good, all those fun criteria that we have-
Yeah, I don't know that there's a legal difference between a special permit and a special exception.
Yeah, I think it's like the tax, where you have a credit or exception and all that stuff.
Right, understood.
Um, that, well, you know more than I do, but I don't think we need to go into it. Commissioner Francis?
And I would just add to your point, every time we approve one of these special exceptions, we put, we put on criteria.
The only one I've done recently is Dogtopia, that was-
And that had a lot of criteria.
The comment was that anytime we had, let me ask, did you pick that up on the, for the record?
I could hear her.
Okay, but for everybody, um, the comment, the comment was that when we've approved this in the past, really just Dogtopia, though, right?
Mm-hmm.
We've had conditions of approval that dealt with noise and noise abatement and things of the like, so, um, which I guess will certainly have to be dealt with here as well.
And we're happy to discuss that as well.
Commissioner Harris.
I just want to know, Dogtopia is an entirely different neighborhood, the T O D District, it's not abutting residential neighborhoods, it's much different, so I don't really think they're analogous, so I think it's not really a fair comparison.
Well, I mean, I brought it up because that's the one we've, we've done recently-
No, I know, that's-
...and I've experienced with.
Understood.
Um, and while it doesn't, it has the same zone, the idea of it being a noise abatement, I think is pretty similar in that respect.
Which is a different environment, in my view, there's a train station right there, it's just, it's much different to me.
Commissioner Braun.
Um, I also think with Dogtopia, and I don't know about the other two boarding facilities, the dogs are always inside, is that true? I mean, I don't know. But here, they're going to be outside, and is this possible to put the plan up on-
No, no, and-
Is it there yet?
Not there yet.
We will have the full discussion of the plans and everything else. I want, but I want you to walk through, I want to walk you through the regulation amendment, you know, some of the changes that we suggested. I felt it was important to get out at the very beginning that we are comfortable going forward with the application-
Yes.
-despite the allegations by Attorney Crusaden. I wanted to at least give you a little bit of knowledge about Dr. Potter, because he's going to be, but he's going to be speaking next, but just so you know, we're going to have Dr. Potter speaking, take you through the full operations and his experience as a veterinarian. He's operated his Stanford facility for five years, I've included in your packet memos from both the Zone Enforcement Department and from the Police Department of Stanford, that he has, has never had any noise complaints. Then we're going to hear from Manny Silva, who is a professional engineer, who's going to walk you through the site plans. Drew Monarch is our architect, he's going to discuss the exterior and interior building renovations, and then Eric Miller-Klein is here, is going to talk you, walk you through our sound study. So there's a lot for us to get through, and I don't want to monopolize this, I felt it was important to provide some context, and so that as we go through this process, you may say, could you add another provision in your- you may say, could you add another provision in your regulation amendment that says X, Y, or Z? And then we can have that discussion. I want to make sure that this is a dialogue regarding this legislative act.
Understood.
So, we're separating this from the application? Um, so, in part-
Well, I mean, they're going to be somewhat together because as we're, I would suspect as we're going through the business of it, we may have something to bring up. So, I wouldn't so quickly separate the two. And one, well, we're not, once we talk about, stop with the regulation amendment, we're going to stop talking about it. I mean, feel free to, that's why I called them together, and I think that makes sense, right?
Absolutely, yes.
So, um, I just note that, so, this regulation change would add daycare to veterinary hospitals, but now there's actually a separate provision under design commercial district that allows doggy daycare. Is there a reason for adding it to the veterinary hospital section as opposed to leaving it where it is already existing?
Well, we wanted to be explicit regarding our, our particular uses. Veterinary hospitals, there's no limitation. It doesn't say what they can or cannot do. Dog daycare has no limitation saying what they can or cannot do. We wanted to be as explicit as possible defining what our use is, a veterinary hospital, with all these other services, together with all the precautions that we're going to be instituting.
So, you're actually expanding, or you're actually either detailing or expanding the definition of a veterinary hospital, which now doesn't have a definition, I guess?
Well, I mean, if you go with the, you know, the second sort of proposal for discussion purposes, we added a semicolon, so you can have veterinary hospitals, and then you can have veterinary hospitals that offer other services.
Right, and the services are grooming and training, is that?
Yep. And we'll get into all that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, the one question I guess I have that doesn't need to be answered right now, but for moving forward with not just the regulation amendment, it focuses more on the applicant's business, but how the business, the applicant's business would be, or if it would be feasible for a regulation amendment or even a condition of approval, whatever it is, but essentially a prohibition on the dogs being outside. How that would affect the application, it's, his, um, his business with respect to boarding, daycare, grooming, training, veterinary. I don't need the answer now, because that's kind of, you can give it to me, or the business side of it can give it to me as well. But I'm just curious how, if, however it was done, but a prohibition on the dogs being outside for extended period of time, absent like emergencies or a minute or two relieving themselves, how that would play with the applicant?
Understood. And I think what, once we get through the entire of our, of our program, our hope is that you'll realize that that's not necessary. But, so, we'll defer that question, but-
Defer it, and I mean that to defer it, because I want to be, and maybe if you can persuade me, commission, that's great, but I want that in the back of your mind because-
Understood.
That's something that came up to mind in preparing.
So, if we can move forward, I'm going to introduce Dr. Philip Potter.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
Good evening, doctor.
And thank you all for coming tonight. And I just wanted to say thank you to the commission for listening to our presentation and also glad to see neighbors that we've met with before in the building. And of course, I want to thank all of our support here as well, too. I will do my best and speak as earnestly as possible to present who we are, what we are, why we exist. And obviously, I'm open to any questions to sort of clarify who, the reason, the whole point of us being here, frankly, why we're willing to try and change things to a degree. A little bit about myself first. I've been a veterinarian for about 14 years. I have 10-year-old and, sorry, an eight-year-old and a three-year-old. And I also wanted to apologize in advance, I'm not an expert in having ever done this before, so if I'm nervous or misspeak, it's because I'm so compassionate about trying to make this happen, frankly. I've spent three and a half years looking for a site. Okay? Okay. Three and a half years looking for a site. And through a tremendous amount of effort and work trying to find an ideal situation for our use specifically, this is where we landed after a lot of failed versions of it. And typically, for the exact reasons that we have to provide for a special permit, but in this version of our economy right now, the buildings that are necessary and available to us to be able to allow and afford this kind of care are very, very small. And then you find, you finally find one, and we go to the owners and we make an offer, but it has to be contingent upon a special permit. And then someone else comes in, Amazon or any other distribution center who wants the same kind of building, and they don't have that same requirement, so it gets scooped out from under us. And that's happened to me. It happened to me with Spot On in Stanford as well, too. And finally, it was just an older gentleman halfway rising and running a rigging shop, sailmaking and rigging shop. And he wanted to give it to someone he liked, that it was going to go to this use, that it would become that. So, there was some morality associated with it. That's the only way it worked, frankly. And in this circumstance, after all, looking so much, and actually with Mark Barnhart's assistance as well, too, looking, scouring Westport, Southport, Fairfield, and this area, looking for the area that we saw where this need was really unfulfilled, and actually has dramatically gotten significantly more. Since the pandemic, the amount of animals in humans' homes has gone up by 30%, so it's underserved, frankly. We provide something that isn't available prior to our inception, almost anywhere, not literally anywhere, but almost anywhere, the combination of that one spot. So, it was with a tremendous amount of effort and work that we come to literally this point tonight. My wife actually couldn't even be here because she was too, had too much anxiety and too much emotion associated with this, because we put up, up to this point, a significant amount of money into the community, local architects and lawyers. And they're here, many of them are here tonight to represent us as well, too. They've already involved ourselves in the community very significantly. And we've leveraged ourselves, and in a very, frankly, uncomfortable way for us, but we're so passionate about the idea that this is possible, and this was one of the only locations possible for us that we're willing to be here and sort of go through, obviously, this uphill battle that has been given to us, certainly. The biggest sort of thing that I think that it's my job is to undo the misconception, because primarily, it's our neighbors who we have to, our immediate neighbors, and then the town, that we have to convince that we're going to do what we say we're going to do, and we are who we say we are. And we're willing to hold ourselves to a much higher standard. The misconception is very common. And the whole reason why we built our first version of this is I, as a veterinarian, having worked in this field for a very long time, didn't feel comfortable leaving my animals in the places that I worked, because I knew how they were taken care of. So, the whole point of it was to create an environment of trust and safety and community, and frankly, a place of work where people would want to show up, which is the reason why these guys are here. This is, you know, the clock is over, they're not getting paid to be here. They're here because they believe in our, in our mission. But we've come down essentially to this one particular building. Mark Barnhart, I believe, sent in a letter of, just factual letter of support, essentially saying, with his assistance, we looked for as many places as possible. This was theoretically the only one that we could really find. Four, I think it was 4.5% of the, of the, of the properties in Fairfield are commercial or industrial. And if we were to limit, which we tried to do, limit the stipulations or the regulations to as much as we possibly could, hold ourselves to a higher standard so that it wouldn't, it would fulfill some of the needs of the neighbors, of the bigger concern of it, this not, this kind of facility, someone else who's not us, who doesn't care as much, who doesn't care about what the neighbors think, and doesn't care about the town of Fairfield, could open up and make some big noisy, cacophonous, you know, smelly, obnoxious version of reality. But I hope to show you that that's the opposite of who we are. So, I would ask you all to sort of think about when you conjure up the idea of a kennel. For me, it's a wire fence, it's mud, it's smell, it's barking, it's dogs sleeping outside as well, too. That's what I grew up, like, in the industry. That's what happened with animals who were staying with us. I worked in places that were like that. I didn't want my animals staying in there. I couldn't very well have my patients, which I had hoped to help, stay in that kind of situation as well, too, for a lot of medical reasons and also for a lot of emotional reasons. So, what I'm going to ask you to do is, which I think a lot of the regulations are built around, this older conception, we are not that. By our very definition, that's not who we are. That's the whole point of our facility, is to break the mold of what is traditional and create something. And frankly, that's why we've been successful. We have people coming from California to see us for medical care. We have people from North Carolina, Long Island, New Jersey, come to, they'll drive through and drop their pets off just to stay with us at a hotel, because they recognize when they have, when they have to go away, or they have an emergency, you have a van, will go to their homes very, very far away, pick up their dogs, drive them to the place, and then they're in a completely different environment that is available. So, that is part of this sort of misconception that I think that we are trying to undo. And one of the reasons why there's so much concern and fear for this kind of facility opening up, because what is typical is not good. And we're absolutely willing to, and do, in our facility now, hold ourselves to a much higher standard. Just a little bit more about our mission in general. I started as a house call veterinarian. I left my last practice as a medical director, became a house call veterinarian. Fairfield, to me, sort of embodies a homegrown, traditional town, and I think that's what everyone is here fighting for, to keep, to remain, for not to become a commercialized version. I'm not, we're not commercialized. It's my wife and myself and my niece who's helping me, thank, thank you, who are here trying to become a part of the community and hopefully a big asset to the community as well, too. From that house call business, which still maintains tomorrow, I have house calls all throughout, in Fairfield, in Southport, in Westport, in Stanford, all the way down to Jersey, frankly, as well, too. I'm the one doctor who does that. We built up this, the goal was to build this new kind of model. One of our neighbors, Julia was quoted, I think in one of the articles, CT Insider, that's right, that she didn't see a problem until one of her neighbors let her know that people in another town didn't like having them near, like them, them, near, you know, their, their homes. And that's, again, that's the same sort of perspective. We're not, we're not that version of reality. And we are absolutely willing to hold ourselves to the highest standard to make sure that our neighbors love us, hopefully. Frankly, I'd like them to use us. There's no reason for me to want someone who lives next to me or is down the street from me to not, if they have, they have animals. I've heard them, I can hear, you know, I can, I can hear them when I, when I drive down the street there. There's animals on the island, on the road surrounding us. I want them to make a left at a left and pull in our parking lot and use us when there's an emergency. And that's my goal for all of us, frankly. I would just ask that in the bigger perspective, it's hard, because we're debunking longstanding conception of what this is and what it will, what it will do to a place. And there are hundreds of examples of these places in a very bad circumstance, that absolutely have deleterious effects on their neighbors, and that's, that's true. But what we're willing to do is not that, is the opposite of that, is to improve their quality of life, frankly. It would be like comparing, you go to a gas station and get a sandwich versus going to Gruel Bar Bretagna, which is right next door to us. Like, that's, that's what I, you know, they're not fundamentally the same thing, and that's, that's who we are. We are, in general, to just explain a little about the business model, we try and be, we are a one-stop shop to a degree. So, we're a veterinary hospital, we're a hotel, we have a daycare currently in Stanford, we have a grooming center. All of those things work as a singular sort of sphere and feed each other. One of the insinuations in one of the articles that was written, which I, again, most of my job is debunking this sort of stereotype, is that what we're proposing to build there is primarily a hotel with a dash of hospital. And just to give you a perspective, two-thirds of our revenue, if that matters, comes from our hospital. 75% of our hotel guests have reported that they're there because there's a hospital. The whole point of, of that hotel existing in combination to a veterinarian is when you go on your vacation or you need to go to work, I can't tell you how many nurses, MJ and Tassiani here, some of our technicians, they can attest, we have, we have hotel guests coming over who have one of ear infections, eye infection. And the reason why, we notice them, that owners don't even necessarily know that they exist, but maybe more importantly, if, if an animal, in any circumstance, if the owner's worried about their animal when they're boarding, that's, that's the reason why they're in the same building. We propose that it could only be associated with a veterinarian for the purpose of trying to assist the neighbors in the idea, and the town, in the idea of that being a requirement so as to limit the number of places theoretically that could be possible to place this kind of facility. There's an incredible uptick for the need of vets, so we're fulfilling a need for the town. Like we mentioned, I mentioned before, 30% more animals in the area. If we, we call, we call around regularly, just two days ago, to find out about when we could get an appointment out of veterinary hospital. And the summary was the soonest that we could get a new client vet appointment was one month. That's a long time to wait for a sick pet. And that's not how we function. So, the need is there, and we want to fulfill that need. And our ability to fill that need will be greater. Dr. Chapnik and Dr. Pickerson, Dr. Pickerson's here, he's one of the doctors who works at Spot On. He's a Fairfield boarding raise, and his mom, Margie, is here too as well, Fairfield resident as well. And Dr. Chapnik, too, over here, one of our, one of our surgeons as well. We're available. We don't say no. We can fulfill the need that is there. And what isn't present currently in the area is the advanced medical services that we have. I would love for everyone in this room to come and see, be in the building and experience the space to understand that we have a CT, and we have, we have laser therapy, and I could just go down this list over and over and over, for things that physically do not exist within a reasonable area of Fairfield. And we can perform all of those services as well, too. And our hope is to do that while maintaining the culture and the idea of being a mom and pop shop. Because, I mean, I'm, I'm in my 40s, so I can be called a pop now, I guess, right? I can be the pop, and my wife is, you know, my wife is ma. But it's, that's who we are, like, that's fundamentally who we are. And that's the kind of service that we provide to people as well, too. I was talking with a client on the way over here, trying to go through my notes and being nervous about having this conversation. A client of mine who I've been doing house calls for, for 15 years or so, 12 years, 12 years or so, and is nine, no less, I'm sorry, nine years. That's how, and she's calling my cellphone. They have our cellphones. Our neighbors have my cellphone, our existing, you know, our current neighbors have our cellphone. There was just, that's right, and so, Mr. Lee, who was very, one of our current neighbors, he was willing to show up as well, too, was just down the street from Spot On in support as well, too, just to prove who we are and why there isn't a concern of how we're going to perform once, you know, once we're physically in the space. Sure. In order to address, like, each one of the issues, we've got, we've, holding ourselves to a higher standard, again, the primary issues, as we've already discussed, smell, safety, and noise, fundamentally. So, I laboriously read through every single letter, every single thing that was sent into the town, because I want this to be the most comprehensive meeting and to address- because I want this to be the most comprehensive meeting and to address those needs of the town and of our neighbors as well too. Because if I don't address those needs, there's, there's, the probability of this going forward is less. So I want to, and also frankly, again, I want to be a good neighbor. There's no, I have no benefit to being a bad neighbor to anyone. I'm inherently a part of the community, one time a veterinarian. We want the community to come in in droves. That would be our goal certainly. As far as smell is concerned, at our previous meeting when we invited the neighbors there, one of the sort of things that we did, we brought, we doubled, so with solid waste, it gets picked up. This is unlike most facilities. Most facilities, and I don't want to gross anyone out, but they have these big toilet-like things and they scoop up all the poop and leave it in a bucket and they'll fill it halfway with water. Sue, who is our hotel director, has worked at previous facilities as well too. One of the things that she said, just to give you a perspective of the separation, when she started, she's amazing by the way, and these are her kids with her as well too. She said, we're working with Kaylee, our director, and she said, Kaylee said this place can't smell. That's what Dr. Putter wants to do. That's the whole point. She said, it's not possible. It's just not a totally unreasonable perspective to attain. And I can't tell you how many times we've modified our protocols to make it possible. But now, we've disproven, so to draw the parallel of what is typical to who we are. Mop buckets, disgusting. They sweep up urine and put them back in a mop bucket. That's why it smells like ammonia and dogs get sick. Community water bowls, we don't do that either. It's like going to a daycare and handing out one, you know, bottle of water and saying enjoy children. And then wondering what they're going to, why they wouldn't get sick. We use, if you've ever been to like Costco, those Zamboni sort of versions of reality. Everything gets neutralized, stuffed up, double bagged. At this meeting the last time, we brought in bags of stool, didn't tell anyone when we brought them to the, to the meeting. Left them strategically throughout, throughout the room, in, in open ways baskets, in a closed space. Just a little, bigger than this, but, but not, not so dissimilarly sized. We were in a similar, similar space when we were talking with all the neighbors. And two hours into a three hour conversation where we entertained every question and concern certainly, which we hopefully will address now, I asked if anyone could smell anything. And there was no smell in the air because we double bag everything. We used our processes there in that, at the closed room, not outside, not in someone's backyard. I mean, outside is, obviously it would be far less. Safety was brought up as well too. And John, the lawyer of Mr. Nuff, also brought this up too. There was a concern in many of the letters, I just want to go down the concerns of the summary of all of the letters that we've written that I want to make sure we're addressing everything for our community, was that there, that we had, that we would let dogs off the leash and people worried about being bitten or bark. I mean, this would be very emphatically state, this very simple thing. When a owner brings into our lobby the double doors, which there are double doors in every single door for the purposes of an animal not being able to get out. Like every exit has, has two doors before they can leave for that exact purpose. To preclude one of my patients or, or one of my hotel guests running into the post route. That would be terrible, you know. Once, once a client brings their pet into the lobby, that animal just never leaves the confines of our property. The only time they would exit that space would be to enter into a four walled, closed in ten foot now, high, solid PVC fence with now a two foot shed roof, which you guys will see later on as well too, we've added those things in for noise mitigation also. Otherwise, they do not leave our property. They don't, they don't leave the property in our hands. So as far as the safety issue is concerned, you can imagine from my perspective, my whole point of the creation of this and my twenty years of school and fifteen years of, of work are based upon helping animals. I certainly don't want them to get out and be hit by a car. That would be pretty terrible. Noise quickly became the big highlighted concern, understandably so. And again, this is where I have to remove, I have to do my best to sort of remove us from what is typical. Existing currently, just to sort of give what John was mentioning before to clarify. There are veterinary hospitals that have outdoor areas where dogs play in Fairfield currently during the same hours. And they are abutting residential zones and they are fenced in with wire fencing, the stuff that's wide open. In spite of that fact, and also the fact that several of them, obviously no one's gotten zoning permission to that because it doesn't exist, right? You guys know that better than myself. In many cases, two cases, they literally share a fence. Like the fence is, of the neighbors is shared by their play area. Now in spite of all that, and again, perfectly fine. They have, there are zero noise complaints from the zoning enforcement officer, which we have documented to any of these hospitals who are existing, functioning in the same capacity that we're willing to function. But we're willing to hold ourselves to solid PVC sen, I mean, just we can go down the list. I don't want to belabor the point. We'll do anything that is necessary to make sure that our neighbors' lives and their children and their homes are kept safe. That's who, that's what we would do anyway. So it's not a big ask for us, to be honest with you. To answer the question about them going outside, the, the, the purpose of that is enrichment and quality of life frankly. Getting animals outside as opposed to containing them inside, it's frankly, in many cases, it's unfair. So we have animals who'll stay with us for, we had a few animals, one client who had broken his leg. The client stayed with us for almost eight months. Physical therapy, so he got a puppy and he got very, he had a bunch of medical issues. The dog ended up, from being a puppy, staying with us for eight months. I wouldn't want that animal to have to stay inside, just as a humane sort of version of reality. But again, the regulations, that would be necessary for sound and for time and whatever. We are open to modification. The reason why we added those, those modifications as, that John recently submitted were to answer many of the things that we read and heard would be necessary to make it more reasonable and more respectful of our neighbors and the town. Okay. Thirty-five dogs is the maximum number of dogs that will be outside. Thirty-five. End this, end of story. Regardless of, of, we're, we're the ones running the buildings, the business. We will hold ourselves to that standard. Of the, the sound study which you will hear assumes, and I don't want to mispeak for Eric because he's the expert, that twenty-one of those dogs would be barking continuously for an extended period of time. And even under that circumstance, does not violate the sound ordinance with all of the mitigation that we've currently offered and put in place. And don't take my word for it, let the man who knows what he's saying, say it. We have cameras in our building. They're on the website right now. They're offered up publicly. Our clients can watch their pets inside their rooms as well too. Part of the way that we gain trust frankly with new clients and sort of what's on our brand as well too, is like you can watch what happens. You can see how many animals are there at any given time. In winter hours, we hold ourselves to a standard. Animals don't go outside, it's too cold frankly. Summer, same thing, anything above, anything above eighty degrees, they're inside all the time. So we're, we're self-limiting and we're happy to put that into regulations as well too for animals to avoid, you know, animals overheating or being cold. In the, in the early morning, six AM to eight thirty AM, we have, we're, we're one to two. That's one person, one dog. One other thing to mention about the thirty-five dogs too, they're not in one big group. We don't do that. We do one to fifteen, like that way, and which is industry standard is like far, far greater than that. One to fifteen because we control them. We spend a certain amount of time individually behavior training our, what we call them guest experience specialists, people who take care of the pets in those rooms. If a dog's barking and they consistently bark, and that can inspire, which we've heard from neighbors as well too, stress. What can inspire stress for dogs as well too. We, we separate them. We have rooms right off every one of those pens for the exact purpose of, we take them inside. We don't have outdoor pens. The dog is barking outside excessively. Sure.
I'm sorry, Dr. I just want to make sure I follow this.
Please.
The one to fifteen dogs that's interior, that's when you're playing with them.
Always, full stop. We don't ever have, and so in, in, if any individual human is with a number of animals, we won't exceed fifteen for essentially them being safe. On a rare occasion, so the industry standard is usually, just for monetary purposes, is one to thirty-five. Will there be some smaller dogs sometimes where we'll go one, one to seventeen, one to eighteen? Has it never happened? I, I'm going, you know, I'm not helicopter. I'm sorry? It's really, it's really more of just like what's typical. It's not really, there's nothing, there's no regulation. And also when we have those animals, even if they were all outside, which happens, thirty, having thirty-five animals is going to happen once or twice a year. Like that's going to happen during peak, maybe like spring break or something of that nature, when everybody's away. And then again, we're still holding ourselves to the hours where that would be appropriate and also mitigating the noise and having the people in those bifurcated pens where they're playing who regularly stop barking. So there's, there's no, no human's going to want to sit in that area and listen to dogs bark all the time. If you watch our cameras tomorrow, go on our website, watch them when they're playing inside because we're not outside now because of the temperature. And you'll see they have, so we don't use, we use an inverse stimulus, a water bottle. If they're fighting, if there's what we call mounting, which can be any aggressive behavior. The way that we don't have dog fights and we don't have issues in our, in our clinic to a dramatically less degree than what is typical is because they're so well trained frankly. And we spend so much time, effort and energy keeping those groups small and well controlled. So again, this is where we have to change the idea of like it's fifty dogs and they're all outside and they're all barking continuously. It just couldn't be further from the truth. We're proactively intervening in those.
What, what techniques do you use to try to control?
So two, two things. We have, so they, each of them get, get behavior trained. Often our clients will say, simply said, a squirt bottle to interrupt behavior, so water, will interrupt behavior almost always. And dogs who are more fickle and continue to bark or are aggressive or mount, they get pulled and they go for a break. They literally have rooms all throughout the inside of, of the building, which specifically are meant for break time. Some animals, which are not appropriate for group because they're too aggressive, they get labeled as individuals. So they get one-on-one treatment with one human, one dog, because they're too rambunctious. Because again, think about it from, from the client, it's one of your pets, maybe one of you has animals. You come home and your dog is soaking wet from being sprayed and has a tear in its ear because it got into a dog fight because it inspired a dog fight. Even just beyond the regulation, there's no, we wouldn't be in business if we functioned that way. Just it's an illogical way of even functioning frankly. Other things too, they're trained for two weeks with a partner from a previously trained person, behavior training. We have, we have two people on staff who are certified behaviors and they sit with them for that length of time and are trained simultaneously so that there's two people in that group, before they're allowed to sort of go solo, if you will. We have a roving supervisor whose only job is to walk around our four interior playrooms now and address issues. Hey, I'm here and we have walkie talkie. Penford and I get Fluffy out of here. He's mounting. Funny things to hear over, over at Walkie Talkie. And they get pulled out and they, and they take a break and they try it again. And if they don't work, we call the client and say, hey, it would be much better for the individual. We don't want anything to go wrong. Again, it behooves us to be that kind of place. We don't want them to have to go over to the hospital with a, with a torn ear or a bite in their neck. Of course, that would reflect very poorly in the whole point of our business of being trustworthy. We have cameras all over the building, which is an important point for trust and whatnot as well too. The idea of it being this cacophonous noise, look at CT News today. They came today. So impromptu showed up and videotaped our pens. Or go on our website and watch it, watch during the day and see how often the dogs are laying down and not barking. Someone, if someone walks in the room, it's a, it's an inspiration to bark, 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 bark. And then they go back to play. They need inspiration to make this happen. It's not like the winner together is constantly barking. You have to remove that idea. And you can see on the CT News, so this, you know, they walk in, they bring their big cameras in. They see the camera and they're barking and then they all stop barking and like half of them lay down. And you can see it for yourself. Again, you don't have to trust me, my words. Go on the website and watch it. It's for public consumption. That's part of the way. Every one of the individual rooms have cameras in them as well too, for that same purpose that we're open kimono, so to speak, with our clients, where they can, they can log in and watch their pet the whole time they're there. The bigger idea of us having, fundamentally what we're asking for is overnight boarding and an allowance to be next to a residential zone to perform our services as we would love to, to be honest with you. Overnight boarding is happening already and then we have a list of places that are publicly. One of the doctors who works for me too, used to work at Southport Veterinary and three years saying that they regularly do overnight non-medical boarding. So it's happening, but as far as the town is concerned and our neighbors are concerned, that isn't really the hot item because they're inside and they're sleeping. There's no offensive nature of a dog sitting in one of our suites and sleeping on a bed with a TV. That's not like a, you know, there's nothing offensive about that as long as we're holding up to our cleanliness, which you could visit and see very easily. The issue would be them being outside close enough to a house. And to sort of parrot what John was saying, as of right now, we have a hundred and thirty feet from our building. The distance, a very long way. We could have a commercial, we could be a, but a commercial zone that could fit in between those two. And if we held ourselves to the standards of, that are currently available with like open fencing, those dogs could be outside and barking for a very extended period of time. It's going to pass right over without, it's going to pass through that other residential lot, or sorry, commercial lot as an example. But we're willing to do everything we can possible. Roofs, wall and walls, sound attenuation, sound expert etcetera, to make sure that that is not the case.
Commissioner Harrison?
Please.
So you, you, if you said this, my notes is in the, in the, and so you don't, you don't take any dogs outside under forty degrees or above eighty?
Correct.
I mean, most of the summer is way above eighty, most of the winter is way above, way under forty.
Yeah, it's just not safe. We can get heat exhaustion in the summer. Well, what, I mean, they might, they'll get locked out for individuals to like go to the bathroom. But that's just like what we're discussing otherwise, you know, that they get locked out to go out. But if it's not hot, we can't. Like we'll, we'll have dogs, especially like, like bully breeds, the ones with the shorter muzzles, Frenchies, which is like the most popular dog now as well too, or the big shaggy guys who are, the Huskies and all these guys, Saint Bernards. They would, they, they, we, we treat dogs for heat exhaustion that come from other facilities. Like they'll get rushed to our hospital honestly. And it takes hours to, they're hyperthermic, they're panting, they're cardiovascularly stressed. It's not, it's not worth it to us frankly. So potty breaks, yes, that will happen. That will happen. But that's one person, literally like in the bathroom, like what we were discussing before. Yes.
Commissioner Abraun?
There's no indoor bathroom? They always go outdoors?
No. So we actually prefer, and it's strange, we prefer to them to go to the bathroom inside. Some dogs just won't. And just because they've been trained innately, they want to go to the bathroom outside. So, and our employees frankly, many of which are here will attest to the fact that they would love for every single dog to go to the bathroom when it's raining and snowing and cold or super hot because it's a, air conditioned, beautiful space. You can see we make this place look like Disney World. There's boats and trees, you know, it's meant to, it's meant to be a beautiful and happy place. So what we're, go please, yeah.
No, and appreciate that.
Sure.
So just going back to the waste, I guess.
Sure.
You said that's done differently than most facilities where it's not.
Yes.
It's picked up by.
Dramatically differently.
Company or something.
I used to work in one when I, before I was in, before, beginning of college, beginning of college. Typically it's a mop, it's a mop bucket. They go over, wipe down the pee as an example, put it back in the mop bucket. That mop bucket lasts typically for the day, which is disgusting, or for just the duration of the first play period. That's in the play period for three hours in the morning and three, three hours in the afternoon. That mop, so what happens, the next pee comes, they lift the pee soaked mop handle and wipe it down. So you're just spreading pee all over. It's disgusting. It's the grease of ammonia. It's notoriously stinky poop. Usually a barrel with water in the bottom of it, maybe a disinfectant and they just splash it in there. It's, it's gross. I don't mean to be gross, but it's gross. So what we do is every stool gets picked up. They have a cart outside of the playroom. It would sit just outside this playroom as you would see it here. They have individual biodegradable bags, so it gets inverted around their hands. They pick up the stool, gets bagged and dropped in a separate bag right away. That, that's on the cart. And then that area gets sprayed with Rescue, which is accelerated hydrogen peroxide. So it's hydrogen peroxide, so it vaporizes into air, safe for pets. You can drink it. It's perfectly safe. Kills parvo, actually kills COVID within forty-five seconds as well too on contact as an example. Parvo is actually even harder to kill. Gets wiped up, that, and on, and that gets wiped up, that gets disposed of. Urine similarly, but just with rags on the ends of Swiffer's. Those rags have a separate bin that they get put in. Those rags have a separate bin that they can put in that is closed as well, too, then all those rags get washed. So, our stool, it gets washed in our washing machine, which we have separate washing machines for hospital and hotel, just to keep things sterile, frankly. And then after that, twice a day, we go through with one of those big Zambonis with Rescue or something called Increduloso, which is alcohol-based, and we alternate them for sterile protocol, what's in the machine, which lays, scrubs the floor, lays everything down, and then it gets vacuumed up and that gets emptied. So, that's just the residue. Looks, the floor looks clean, there's no poop, there's no pee. That, that then gets dumped out. That's the secret. Like, that's, that's how we keep this place smelling like, when you walk in the Marriott and you smell the Atune fragrance, which we have actually in our lobby, you can smell it because it's not overwhelmed by feces and urine. And that's exactly why. See, the level of attention to detail. We diffuse pheromones in our HVAC system that are reduced cortisol levels in pets. Called DAP, dog appeasing pheromones. And we have a different one, feel-away, that we diffuse in the HVAC system where the cats are as well, too. We can't smell it. It's been proven to decrease cortisol levels in cats while they're boarding and dogs while they're with us as well, too. The simple purpose of, we go to that level of care to pay attention to these guys. In our lobby where our clients are, we diffuse something that smells good.
Is there one that works on human beings?
Yeah.
You're really there.
So, I hope that I've addressed each one of these major concerns. So, both from a neighbor perspective, we will do everything necessary to be immediate good neighbors in each one of those locations. Smell, sound, noise. Now, to neighbors outside of our immediate neighbors, what matters to them would be the effect on the town and if we should be allowed to be in Fairfield, if we're the right kind of business to be a part of Fairfield, and also, could we be replicated elsewhere? Could all of Post Road in Fairfield become dog daycares, right? Who maybe don't have the same level of care that we do. And that's why John, Mr. Nuff, has decided to add stipulation and regulations associated with making it virtually impossible, in combination with Mark Barnhart stating factually that this would be the only location along the Post Road that it would apply to. And just for frame of reference, I know that like, if this were my home as well, too, I would have concerns also, and I hope that I've mitigated some of those concerns. But we're in the commercial district, we are on the Post Road, we are next to the junction of ninety-five, we are across from the train line where the Exxon battery factory used to be like an industrial zone. Like, that's, I can't think of a place more appropriate for size, shape, and what we're willing to do to make sure everything is good for this town and to provide the services that we have the capability of providing. I can't think of a better place, honestly. I hope I've answered immediate neighbors. I hope that we've helped and shown through all of our energy and effort through the sound studies and Manny Silva, who's our site engineer, to show the forest of trees. So, everything we do, we were asked originally, when we met with the town, to put in twenty-one trees. Instead, we put in forty-two. And those are there now. Paul Lenosi and his honor here, too, they went ahead and did it for the purpose of saying like, look, we're willing, we want this to work. They went way above and beyond. They doubled everything, the bushes, the trees, et cetera, which frankly, I love. Thank you, by the way. It looks beautiful. Again, to really, at each sort of area of concern, we just check each box hopefully and make everyone realize that we really are here to help fundamentally and not to harm in any way. And to sort of go over what John was saying as well, too, if not us, I don't know who. This is an abandoned car dealership for however many years. I don't know the exact amount of time. I can't imagine that our putting millions of dollars into this building and fifty jobs, so from the town's perspective, bringing in taxes, property taxes, in jobs, and beautifying a broken building, no offense, Paul and Rich, we're going to make it gorgeous. It's going to go from being a nine-car garage, which I imagine was very noisy, into a beautiful, brand-new facility, which is going to look very similar to this. We have that rendition on there somewhere as well, too. The very first slide, that's our building as it is currently, that's my family. Hi, Hudson. There's, so as it is currently existing and you can see the amount of trees and that everything's going to look brand-new, and the last slide being our current facility. I really do feel to close out. I'm sorry I've taken up so much time, but I'm very passionate about this, frankly. Reading everything that's been said. It breaks my heart, frankly, to have negatively affected lives of people just trying to do something that's really meant to be helpful and good. And I'm sorry for the misconceptions that were maybe worried about and for how negative it was for some people. My, one of my, my brother, before we started this building, he passed away right before. He was a big part of the legacy of building this. It was, it is his idea with mine. So, I just hope to honor him and this community the best way I can. Sorry.
Okay.
Love you.
I do have some, maybe I can help distract with some operational questions for you.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
How many do, how many dogs would be there at full capacity?
Um, we have...
And take your time, maybe just help, hopefully help me distract.
We have seventy-seven suites inside, so that would be the maximum number that we'd hold.
Okay, and that would be for kind of all the services that you would provide would be seventy-seven?
Mm-hmm.
And while you have that thirty-five dog limit outside, any one of those seventy-seven potentially could be going outside?
It would be, like, we couldn't actually because our, what we're holding ourselves to is thirty-five. Like, that's, we couldn't because also, there's a lot of rules in, in the way of that being possible. One person per fifteen, we would never use, we have four divisions in there, it would never work, we just don't. The number of times that we have two groups is often, the number of times we have three groups is rare, and the number of times we have four groups does peak, maybe?
Actually, only open four groups.
So, we only had one time in our history of our current facility where we have no noise complaints, zero, in the five years that we've been open, four groups simultaneously. And that, they were, they weren't outside, they're not four groups outside. So, again, thirty-five is what we will hold ourselves to.
Where's your, your current place is in Stamford?
Yes, in our...
What's the address?
One eight four Sellick Street.
Is that C E L?
Sorry, like Tom Sellick, S E L L E C K. And our neighbor Edwin and his daughter Kat and his son Edwin Junior and his mom, as soon as we were, again, made aware of any of the issues that they were having, which were elicited luckily by this conversation, it was the first time that I was made aware that they were having issues with our garbage coming in the middle of the night, which I didn't know, frankly, the timing of it. So, within a couple days, we had them change the time at expense to us. But again, as a reaction to, sorry, as a reaction to them having an issue, like, that's the kind of reaction we would have. I'm not a dispassionate person about the people who live around me, I don't want them upset. And we still don't have noise complaints against them.
What's the capacity down in Stamford?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry. I could get a shoe. Just, we're almost exactly the same size of building. It's a sixteen-thousand square foot building, sixteen thousand four hundred, this one, sixteen thousand seven hundred.
Dogs go outside?
Same.
Similar type of schedule?
Literally the schedule that we've offered to you, we're trying to be as honest and earnest.
No, that's fine, I'm just trying to get...
No, no, I know. I just mean like, we're giving you what we do, so we're experts at it now, because we've been doing it for five years, we know what the reality is.
How many dogs are outside, for one of your periods down there, your nine to twelve shift, how many dogs on average are outside in Stamford?
If it's not above eighty, below forty, we have two pens, like two area, then a third one that's like sort of off the side that typically, I'm going to ask you, typically the one on the end is used for individual, right, the one on the far right, on the far right. So, a similar number would be like thirty-five would be outside, you know?
But on average, do you normally see thirty-five?
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. What is your average normally?
I would say thirty. It would depend on the group.
Of course, I'm just looking for a range.
Average.
Like, the total number of dogs that would be outside.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, you...
And before you answer, just, and just who did you consult with for the record?
Sue's our director of the hotel. She runs the hotel.
Sue, what's her last name?
Sue Stewart.
Thank you, that's all I need.
She's the expert of all things hotel.
Which is fine, I just want to get her on.
And also, in relation to that, like, the sound study that was performed, again, was twenty-one of those dogs that could theoretically be outside constantly barking for an hour.
I understand. And down in Stamford, are those outdoor pens enclosed or, as I said, outside?
Just same, so they're big, open, like, just the same as we're proposing here, it's a mirror image of it essentially. Those are eight-foot high, though, and these we offered to be ten-foot high to assist with, the ones in Stamford are eight-foot high. The ones in Fairfield propose would be ten feet high with an additional two-foot-high shed roof, which Eric, our sound engineer, created specifically to attenuate sound. And we, so we, we found out what was necessary, we went above that to ten feet, then we went above that to add the shed roofs. Because, again, I want my neighbors to enjoy our presence. And greater Fairfield, I don't think it's going to be any issue at all.
Well, that was, my next point, question was going to be whether it was enclosed or not. It sounds like it's partially...
Partially enclosed. And what Eric will describe better than myself, because I'm not the expert, the expert who went to engineering school certainly, is that if we were to enclose the entirety of it, it would increase noise. It either has to be a solid structure, which means we'd increase the footing of the building, right? Or if it's a shed roof, there's enough reverberation in there that it would create odor and smell and reverberation of noise. So, he designed it specifically to attenuate most noise. And he gave me an allowance of another certain feet down, down the way, so I could increase that amount as well, too, to further attenuate and also create some shelter outside as well, too, which we would be happy to. And again, Paul Lenosi, who's a pillar in this community, has offered very generously to assist in that, you know, for me, because I'm so upside down on this at this point and not even knowing what was going to happen, he's willing to help make sure the neighbors are happy as well, too, and pay for some of that addition.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other members of the commission have a question for Dr. Putty? Okay.
We're going to be hearing from the...
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, we still have Manny Silva, professional engineer, we have our architect, and then we have the sound expert. So, but I think Dr. Potter's testimony was incredibly valuable.
Nice to meet you, Potter.
I told you he was committed in earnest and I think I undersold it. So, with that, why don't I introduce Manny Silva to take you through our site plan, probably in an abbreviated fashion, Manny.
So, for the members of the public and for everybody, as, this may not be our only night doing this, we do have a curfew at ten o'clock that we try and stick with. If we don't finish, which I kind of expect, which we find, this will go on to the next hearing, so everybody will have a chance to speak.
Agreed.
And should anybody wish to submit comments, public or otherwise, to us via email, trust me, we read all the emails as well. And that's not the...
Would that include objections?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Manny Silva from Rose T Zone Company, thirty-five Brentwood Avenue, Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm a registered civil engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm used to working with developers and working for Mr. Potter. As you can see, he's very passionate about his project here and it's, makes the job or the project unique with all the, with the amount of passion he has for this project here. So, as Attorney Nuff had stated, the existing, I don't know if this is showing up, that one's better, right? It's more reflective. So, the existing property is on Post Road. We have a commercial property here and then a commercial property here in these two, and then there's the residential, some residential properties here on the back and then right to here. As you can see, our furthest, our closest location to a residential property is from this corner of our enclosure, which is approximately fifty feet, fifty-point-seven feet. So, the existing property is all, was all paved up until recently. This was the Hyundai, Belize Hyundai dealership, they had their showroom here in the front and then they had their service area here in the back and they used this whole area, this whole paved area here to store products, which is new cars. So, this project, we, with this project, we are going to convert the showroom area into a dog daycare or hotel with a veterinary hospital. We are going to restrict the entranceway off of Post Road as an entrance only here. We're going to circulate around the building, have some parking here. And as you can see, you're going to see even better in the landscaping plan. We have eliminated some impervious areas here and added landscaping around the south and east southwest around these residential neighbors. And we actually are willing to eliminate, create a larger buffer here with these parking spaces here if need be, up to the commission. So, the entrance for the, and exit for the property is going to be here, where the dogs are going to be dropped off and leave and enter, enter and leave the property in this location here. We are going to have two-way traffic coming out to Post Road in this direction here where we have three existing curb cuts we're going to utilize. This one is two-way, this one's going to be a one-way, and then I believe the other one is also just an entrance only. We have approximately, on this plan shown here, a hundred and twenty-six spaces. It's more, more parking than we actually require for this use. Again, the site was already, the existing paved lot, so we just restriped it and this will have, with the exception of where we added landscaping, it can generate up to, we have up to a hundred and twenty-six spaces. Lot area is eighty thousand square feet. Currently, the lot coverage is allowed up to seventy-five percent. We're only using twenty-one and a half percent of the seventy-five percent that's allowed. And then the FAR is allowed up to a hundred and fifty percent. And currently, the site as proposed will only use eighteen and a half percent. The building, as you can notice, is located as forward as possible outside of this residential district. This building was, we're, within the setbacks, if we had to rebuild this building today, it would be actually further south. So, this building is as pushed forward as possible outside of the, to be furthest away from the residential properties as much as possible.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
So, what is the nearest distance to residential property and if you know what the closest distance to an actual residential structure, a home?
I have the answer to the property because I did, like I said, so right here, we're, to the residential property, we're fifty-point-seven feet to this property here, and then to this one, we are seventy-three-point-one. And then here, this is a commercial, commercial use, so that's not what you're asking, but that one's where we're actually thirty feet from the commercial use, but that's not a residence. As to structures, the structures are substantially further away, they're near the street, up, you know, they're up near the front edges of the road, and this is to their backyards.
Commissioner Abraun.
Is it possible to point out where the different zones are? There's a...
Sure, sure.
Centered design district, which is most of the property, then there, part of it is in Residence B, and adjacent to it is Residence A and Residence B, right?
Yeah, so I have these handouts, I could actually hand them out, in case you want to pull up the large plans.
Have these been submitted to the record?
It's the same, it's the same, just reduced size.
Time to record.
Yeah. I just want to make it handy for everyone.
If the regulations change, it would only be for Residence B, not Residence...
I think I gave someone one that I marked out wrong. Sorry about that. I scribbled on one here. Did I give it to you? Sometimes I write my notes on the first one and then I hand it out by accident. Sometimes I write my notes on the first one, and then I hand it out by accident. Um, so as you can see, um, there's a res, the, the zone line is actually right here. It goes right behind the build, the existing building, um, I hope I'm not causing those yellow squares.
No, that's.
Okay, so the, so from here to the, to Post Road is a commercial district, and then there's a zone line through the property, which is a little bit atypical, I would say, but it happens, um, and then this back portion where the, the dealership used to park all its vehicles was, uh, was residence, was residence, uh, B, I believe, yeah. Um, so normally, uh, if, if, normally you'd have a rezone here, you'd have this contiguous, so you, someone would, you know, file a zone map to have that rezoned commercial, but the, the property is what it is right now, and it's been that way for a long time, and the zone line is, uh, how, the zoning commission at that time created the zone map was they had it set an offset from, uh, an arbitrary distance from Post Road, and I'm sure that's what, that's what is there today. Um, the next slide is going to be our drainage and utility plan, um, so, since, like I said, essentially, the, the, the site was an existing paved area, and since we're going to add some landscape areas, we're actually gonna reduce the amount of impervious area on site, which will actually reduce the amount of volume, volume, uh, being, a runoff volume from the site, from the existing condition, and will also increase their water quality going into the, uh, into the stormwater system. So, stormwater system is going to be various dry well catch basins along the site here, this is on SP two, and then, uh, so the water will go into those dry well catch basins, and then infiltrate into the ground, it'll be filtered, and it will, um, there's gonna be some overflow pipes that connect, uh, for higher storm events, but that will, uh, ensure that, on the normal storm events, that no water will be discharged out to the Post Road, so that'll actually reduce and mitigate any kind of flooding concerns. Um, so again, our stormwater, uh, will be a decrease in, uh, discharge, decrease, decrease in volume and an increase in, uh, um, water quality, and that's because at this landscaped area, it's off about five thousand square feet of, uh, impervious area, and then with that parking would be another, uh, three thousand additional, so that being removed.
Commissioner Braun.
Could you just repeat the change in impervious area?
It's a reduction of five thousand square feet, um, with the landscaping that we added, and then if you were to take away those last row of parking, which is something that the owner has put on the, as considered, um, that would be an additional three thousand square feet, so a total of eight thousand.
The reduction of five thousand, from what?
From the existing condition that was prior.
Which is?
So, the landlord has done some of this work al- already, like, to add landscaping and, uh, redo the paved areas, um, so we've already reduced the impervious area from, we've already reduced the impervious area by five thousand square feet, from the, from when it was Hyundai.
But what was that, what was that space, uh, what I'm asking?
What was the total?
What was the total, where, what did we, what did we begin with?
Oh, we began with, essentially, a hundred percent impervious on the site, so it was paved, it was paved lot line to lot line with the building in the middle, more or less. There's some small landscaping islands that were there, they had a couple of trees, but they were, they're, they're not really, uh, they were very small, so it's, I would say that the whole lot was impervious.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So during construction, um, we have a stormwater control plan, um, this is typical, um, we would put silt stacks in the catch basins, but again, um, we've already done a lot of the, the landscaping work on site to remove the impervious areas, um, that's just to protect, uh, just protect the, the adjacent properties and, uh, from, from any kind of water being discharged during construction off of the, uh, off of the property or any kind of sediments. Let me just go to the next one. That's the landscaping plan, it's colorized, um, you can see here, uh, where we have are the new landscaped areas here, uh, again, we, we specified twenty-one arborvitae's, and the reason why we use arborvitae's is twofold, one, it's a visual, uh, barrier, they hedge together nicely, they go up to forty feet high, and they hedge together for a visual barrier, but also to, um, here's the, these, it's like, uh, purplish areas, the enclosures, where the dog, the enclosures are, where they're gonna have a ten-foot fence, which will block sound on that ten-foot fence with the shed, with the shed roof above, and then the reason why we picked arborvitae's is because, as arborvitae's are, uh, kind of a soft material and very dense, they also, uh, contribute to noise attenuation also, so they're like a noise barrier, uh, more effective so than like a solid, like a solid barrier. So, we're, we'll have, um, I'm trying to remember what the height of that fence is back there. I just don't wanna misspeak. So what we'll have is, uh, what, what was said by, uh, Attorney Nuff was, uh, that we had twenty-one arborvitae's here, but the landlord has actually doubled it, he put in up, upwards of forty in there, um, to, uh, and again, that's going to create a hedge that will just, will block visual, the visual, uh, you know, block the view of this area here in the back, but also, more, more importantly, they'll help block the sound, um.
Those lavender areas, are they the catch, dry catch basins?
They're dry well catch basins, yeah, all the drainage on site is dry well catch basins. Um, and we have some ornamental trees, uh, shown in the islands up here, up, up in the front, um, and that legend kinda shows that those, those couple of, uh, ornamental trees, but the majority of our trees on the landscaping plan is gonna be those arborvitae's along residential property.
Are the ornamental trees, are they native?
Yeah, they're, they are, we, we always try to use native, but if you catch something that's not, I'll just always switch it up. Um, we are using a pin oak, red maples, the giant arborvitae's, and then, um, some common boxwoods. So, I'm not gonna bore you with the details.
The lavender, the blue, or whatever, the first one is, the blonde one is the fenced-in dog enclosure.
Right, so this is a fenced-in dog enclosure, right, and then that's split up into three, you're gonna, the architect will go over it in more detail, and that's where they have, they split up into three different pens.
And the top one is the other one?
Is the one on the side, no, it's nearest to the commercial.
But another, the dog and, the dog enclosure?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, so this is gonna have a ten-foot fence around it, around the whole, around the whole outside, and then there's the building wall, obviously, and then there's gonna be a shed roof above that, and then about, you know, over a hundred and sixty, I think it's about a hundred and, a hundred and sixty-ish, a hundred and seventy feet, there's a, there's gonna be, there's a row of arborvi- arborvitae's that are gonna be, um, when they're mature, right now, I think they're around six, seven foot tall, they're gonna be very rapidly going to be around forty feet. They're, they're higher than seven foot? Twelve foot, so he bought twelve-foot ones, um, so, um, that's gonna create a nice visual and sound barrier at about a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and seventy feet away from that enclosure also. So you have a solid, solid barrier, you have distance, and then you'll have a vegetative barrier.
The dog enclosures, um, are they enclosed to the point that they have to count for coverage or FAR or any of that stuff?
I mean, that's a question for Mr. Went, but I, I believe they do not. Um, because they're so, they're not in the setback, they can be as tall as the building, I would say, um, so there's no, there's no height restriction on the fence itself, um, but, uh, no, it does not, I don't believe it counts as FAR or anything.
If, as I've said, you know, one of the things I've said to keep in mind is, what if we enclosed it, how would it, how would that affect things? If you enclosed it like it would be a permanent structure, would you be compliant with? And if you don't know, we can find this out, FAR, lock coverage, things like that.
I believe, we would be, because we are so, like I said in the beginning of my, um, presentation.
Yeah.
Uh, a hundred, seventy-five percent of the lot is allowed for coverage, and we're only using twenty-one.
Yeah, and that's my guess, too, but I, something to confirm.
Yep, and we could definitely do that, but I, I'm comfortable to say that we, we would, we would be, still be compliant with FAR and coverage.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, just a question, I was just looking at the code review minutes, and, um, I think the code requires to review one shade tree for every ten parking spaces?
Right, so, that is a regulation that normally compli- applies to a new site, this is a kind of a re, uh, reuse of the site, now, if we added up all the trees, though, just around here, we've added forty, forty-two trees, um, so that comes out to more than one per ten spaces, um, because we only have a hundred and thirty, twenty-six, um, so I know that in the, depends on the interpretation of the regulation, but we definitely, we have more shade trees than we have parking spaces by more than a factor of ten, one, one per ten.
So you feel like you meet that requirement?
I feel we do, that someone could say, well, you need to have one in every ten space, um, that's how some other towns interpret it, but I, I believe that in Fairfield, if we show that we have added, uh, almost fifty new trees to an existing reuse, uh, uh, adaptive reuse, um, that we would meet that, that we would meet that requirement, yeah.
Commissioner Corsoil?
I, I believe you said the applicant has put on the table the idea of further reducing the impervious surface?
Correct, so there.
Can you point to where that would be, and is that a reduction in parking?
Yes, it would re, it would eliminate, um, hold on, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yeah, go back to the site plan. Yeah, I wrote it. It would eliminate eighteen spaces, uh, yeah, hold on a little bit more.
Thank you, I'm online.
I'm online, yeah, it would, um, eliminate these eighteen spaces here, and then would give you a, an additional buffer of about eighteen feet from the property line, so.
And that would be planned for also?
Correct.
Commissioner Francis, then Commissioner Harrison.
Are, are there standards for trees, I mean, frankly, I regard arborvitae as bush.
Right, it's, um, so because an arborvitae is, is considered, it's a shrub, right? But it's a shrub that grows forty feet tall, it, it casts a shadow probably better so than a lot of shade trees would, um, so like, if you put, um, like a, a Korean or American dogwood in an island, uh, it would be a ten-foot tall tree, and it would stay that way for, you know, it'd only grow, you know, within five years to maybe twelve foot, and then it would only cast a shadow on the pavement, um, which is, you know, much smaller than what an arborvitae would grow to, so in about five years, these arborvitae, arborvitae would be somewhere between thirty and forty feet high, and, and I think the intent of the shade tree in parking lots is to reduce the temperature of the asphalt, so that you don't have this reflective heat, um, coming off of the, um, off the asphalt, and I think the arborvitae's, in the, in the, in the, in the intent of the regulation achieves that and more so than a regular trade tree, a shade tree would.
Yeah, uh, that regulation is also visual, so I'm not sure if your assumption is correct, that they don't have it in every ten space, but parking is a thing in this project.
Right, it's not, so if, if you, if you would like to see a shade tree every ten spaces, I'm sure, we wouldn't, um, it wouldn't affect our overall parking rate, or count to, to where we couldn't have our use. Correct.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you, and a few more questions on the trees, I like trees. Um, tell me more, you said the owners that planted some arborvitae?
Correct.
When was that?
Uh, that Paul hit, I think it was the last couple of weeks, Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Can you hear that, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble hearing you.
And that's, uh, Paul Inosi?
Yeah, of United, of United Properties, which is the landlord.
If he wants to say, let me have him come up then, please.
Do you wanna, do you wanna speak, or do you want me to just answer? Okay, so because we had the meeting with the neighbors, um, and there was such an emphasis on creating a buffer between the residential properties and this, um, and we, like I said, the existing condition was, it was paved right up to the property lines, um, we had created the site plan where we had this buffer, and the landlord went ahead and installed that landscape buffer ahead of the approval, um, kind of as, uh, one, to show the neighbors that we're, we're serious about, you know, mitigating their concerns, and two, to kinda create, either, either way, to create kind of a buffer from a commercial use and the residences in, in the neighborhood. So, the landlord wants to basically be a good neighbor also, no matter who the tenant is, um, and because the tenant is going to be Dr. Putter, um, and with the sound studies that we, uh, you know, with the concerns that the neighbors had about sound, we, we said that we should create, uh, not just a visual break between the residential and the commercial use, but also one that's going to help with the, the sound, uh, in between the two properties.
And the neighbors, that you mentioned, they were in agreement with arborvitae's, I mean, they look a little Disney-esque.
I don't think that, I think the arborvitae thing was, we selected that at, after the meeting with them, so it's not like we asked, we're gonna put arborvitae's, uh, do you guys agree with it? It was, um, you know, what's the best thing that we can do here to, to create a visual, but yet also a, uh, an audio barrier between the two uses, and arborvitae's is, is the, is the thing that you would select.
Yeah, all right, one more question.
Yep.
Then I'll stop, um, is there an irrigation system, or how, I guess, how, how's the watering take place? Does that, is it just natural rain, or what do we?
Right now, I, I don't know if he, I can't say if they put in an irrigation system yet, um, but for, for this, arborvitae's are very water thirsty, they're thirsty trees, because they grow so fast, so they're gonna have to have some kinda drip, uh, drip hose irrigation, it's not gonna be sprinklers or anything like that, um, but, um, they would have, they would require, uh, some kinda drip hose irrigation.
Okay, okay, all right, December's a tough time to grow trees, so.
Yes, it is, yeah, but it's not, it hasn't been a bad year so far. Any other questions? Okay, so the last plan, I don't think I have, um, on the presentation, because it was done by someone else, but you have it in your packets, we did a photo metrics plan to ensure, so all the, the dealership lights that were on site have been removed, and we put, uh, state-of-the-art LEDs, um, again, that's not the lighting plan, you have a colorized one in your, in your, in your packet, not in the one that you're, that small one, but the big sheets, um, that was done by a, a lighting engineer, and so you have all house side shields on the new LED, they're gonna, they're LED blades, um, and they all have house side shields, so there's no, uh, foot candle spillage onto the adjacent properties, um, so that's an improvement from the existing condition, um, and, um, that's basically my presentation, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions?
If, if you, so you've, um, you've reduced the impervious, okay.
You reduced the impervious area all.
Right, and then you're, you're gonna reduce it by another three thousand?
If you got, if, if the commission would like us to.
That's all at the back end, where those trees are?
Correct, if you wanted an additional eighteen feet, which is that rear part portion right here.
Would that have another layer of trees then planted?
Correct, we wouldn't just leave it as grass, no, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's, um, what's your parking count now, uh, assuming that the back portion stays, spaces?
So, it would be.
One of the issues, and, and I wanna just preempt Manny for just for a second, because the, the code review minutes said that this is professional office, a veterinary office, parked at four per thousand, but the fact is, a, a good portion of this building is not professional office, a lot of it is, is, are, is inhabited by dogs with a couple of people watching over them, so, under that requirement, under, under the most conservative requirement, uh, the code review minutes said we're required to have sixty-two spaces, I, I would argue that there is a provision in your regulations that gives the commission some latitude with that regard, and even though we have a hundred and twenty-some spaces, that we actually require far fewer than, than sixty-two, because, you know, this is not a typical medical office where you have multiple doctors, a receptionist, and PAs, and whatever, and, you know, a lot of people come, patients coming and going, our patients and customers come in the morning, get dropped off, and then they leave, so it's a, it's a far different sort of, uh, scenario than you would typically encounter with a medical office.
Fair, and, but the requirement was, how many persons?
Sixty-two.
And how many do you have with the back portion?
One twenty-five, I think.
So, we have one twenty-six on this site plan currently, so if you eliminate the last eighteen spaces here at the south end, it'd be a hundred and eight.
Okay, I mean.
That's, I think, what you.
Right.
No, yeah, I just wanna make sure we, there's gotta be, you know, we, obviously, we need a regu-, there's a regulation to it, your point's well taken, but regardless of the back, or including the back or not, you've got enough parking.
I understand, I, I, you know, I mean, whether, whether it's lighting or whether it's trees, I mean, we're not relying upon any non-conformities, and we're trying to comply, um, with the regulations as, as much, I, I mean, we're complying with the regulations.
No, and that's fine, yeah, the way you started, I thought you needed a variance, but, okay.
Oh, did you go call me?
Um, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah.
Question, is there a generator on site, I notice this is, this is open all the time, so I imagine you would have a generator.
Yeah, so, for, because it's a medical use, a generator's going to be, uh, right here, where is it? It's right, right there, it's gonna be next to the transformer. Where is it? It's right, right there. It's gonna be next to the transformer. So there's a transformer there right now. Um, we're just gonna put a generator between the transformer and the building.
Would that generate any kind of noise or is it, when it's operating or?
Um, so, yes. I mean, it will generate noise to the point where it's going to, um, be a nuisance to the neighbors, no. Um, so generators themselves have an enclosure that attenuates some of the sound. Um, and the closest neighbor to them is the, to the generator would be the commercial use to the, to the, to the west.
Where was the dumpster or?
The dumpster enclosure right now is right here, but that can be relocated also if need be.
Waste removal, is that placed there or is that placed inside? I forget where.
So the waste is held in, I, I think what, uh, Mr. Putter was explaining was it kinda, it gets kept inside as long as possible and then they bring it outside prior to the, uh, the waste collection guys coming out. So this, it's not left outside for very long.
Does the waste collection guy come daily?
I think that depends on how much waste they generate. Um, I know in their Stanford, what they've explained in their Stanford location was, um, because the neighbors didn't like them coming early in the morning, basically at night, you know, 5 o'clock in the morning. He's actually paid extra for them to come during business hours during the day, um, so that they don't make any noise, um, during the middle of the night or early in the morning. So the question is, your question was how frequently they come pick up. That really depends on how he schedules it.
Any other questions? Turn enough.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, our architect Drew Monarch has been patiently awaiting, uh, virtually, uh, from somewhere in New Jersey. So if Emma Lyon can assist us with, uh, making Drew available to the commission, that'd be great.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Have a good.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for, thank you for having me. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, terrific.
Please state your name.
Okay, so my name is Drew Monarch. Um, my company is Monarch Architects. I'm licensed in New Jersey as a registered architect. Uh, my address is 1 Michael Drive, Bud Lake, New Jersey, 07828. I'm working as a representative of design, uh, I'm sorry, Locust Design Collaborative. Uh, and their address is, um, 115 East Putnam Ave, Greenwich, Connecticut, 088, 06830. Uh, under Sarah Vitac, re, uh, registered architect. Um, I've been practicing architecture for, uh, licensed for over five years and in the field for over 12 years. Um, and I just wanted to go over the, uh, the, the concept, uh, of the building, uh, the basic layout, how you enter, um, and then the building characteristics and then some of the pertinent facts as far as sound and the, the odor control and the mechanical HVAC, HVAC systems. Okay, so we're looking at sheet eight, uh, A3 here. Um, if you're looking at Plan North, I'm gonna refer to, uh, Plan North as the top of the sheet. Plan South as top, uh, bottom of the sheet. Plan West, left, and East as right. So we enter the building at the Plan North location where there's gonna be a new vestibule. Uh, essentially what the building is broken up into is the two parts where the, the west side, the left side there is gonna be the hospital portion and then the right side will be the, the hotel portion. That'll be where the, the suites are, where the, the animals are kept. The left side will be where the, uh, more, more typical protocol type veterinary operations happen. Um, you come in, there's two receptions. One is for the hotel, one is for the hospital. Uh, I just wanted to kind of take a step back and say that the building is a 3B construction, steel construction, masonry wall exterior, fully sprinkled, uh, just to make sure that that's clear. Um, as part of that too, the existing building as it was, as an auto dealership, had a lot of exits and entrances. Uh, we've kind of utilized those to the maximum potential to allow them to, um, to, to open up into the exterior enclosures, uh, the fenced enclosures. Um, employee entrance on the, the Plan South side where the stairwell is. Uh, but in total, we have a, a total of nine, uh, I believe nine exits to the building. We only are required two. We have nine on a fully sprinkled building. It's, uh, one-story with, uh, an elevated, small, I don't wanna say a mezzanine level, but it's a very small second level, uh, which has two means of egress that you can come out, an 88 bathroom. And that's primarily where the, um, the feline, the cat, the cats will be kept. Um, the dogs will be kept on the first floor. So, um, just to kind of get back into the separation of the two, the, the Plan West side, the left side, that's gonna be, like I said, your prototypical, um, veterinary hospital practice. The right side will have the larger open areas, the play areas, the suites and the access to the exterior enclosures. Um, so part of, again, I'm trying to keep this short and sweet for you guys. Um, but the, the two main things for the interior of the building, other than the, the life safety components, would be the, the sound attenuation and the HVAC, HVAC systems. So sound attenuation really kind of comes down to the, the main area of where the dogs and suites and the players would be held. Uh, right now, currently, those areas are all block walls. We're gonna do some work to put some additional, um, sound attenuation on some gypsum wall resilient channels to help bounce the sound back within the space. And then within the space, we're gonna put some, uh, absorptive cloud, ceiling clouds in, wall panels, um, and try to make the surfaces within the space absorb the sound much better, uh, as opposed to bringing it outside the building. Obviously, once you get outside the building, we have the sound study that Eric will speak about. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that that kind, that area is gonna be considered. It's not, we're just leaving it to the outdoor play area. We're considering the inside play area as well. The inside enclosures to be accounted for. Um, and then the, the other kind of touchy su- subject for the, the interior space would be the odors. Um, this building has six rooftop units, um, with different, all different capabilities. Three of them have actually expanded their life, their life cycle and will be replaced with a high-efficiency, um, outside air, economizer, dehumidification, all of the, the bells and whistles that go into making this space, um, a, a better functioning space. And fortunately for us, those three units coincide with the, uh, the, the suites and the play areas on the interior. Um, the other three units that are existing that are over top of the hospital section, those have the ability. They're a little bit, they're a little bit younger in lifespan, but they also have the ability to be modified to accommodate for any additional odors, filtration, dehumidification, that is, is part of that process. Um, so I just wanted to make those points very, very noticeable. As you can see on the plan, uh, and I think this has been spoken about several times. We have the, the roof enclosures, as you can see on the, I'm sorry, if you can go up to just scroll up a little bit. Emma Lyon, please. So we have the, the fence enclosures. We have 10-foot fence essentially wrapping the perimeter of the fence enclosures. Within the inside, we have six foot, just, you know, just for the ease of, um, installation, if you will. We have our roof enclosures, which I'll let Eric go over as far as the, um, as far as the sound mitigation and attenuation. Um, but, yeah, I think that, um, as far as inside the building, we're gonna, you know, we haven't designed it out fully yet. Um, we're kind of getting through this process, but that is 100% our intention is to make the sound within the building, stay within the building. Um, and, you know, Eric has his plan for when it gets to the exterior, but my plan with the way I design is I like to keep everything inside. And as you can see, Dr. Putter likes to have a nice, um, robust design inside. And part of that, uh, we can, we can most certainly contribute to the, the acoustics and the, the HVAC in that space.
Uh, Mr. Monarch, uh, where will the new HVAC units be in relation to the neighbors? And what, if any, difference will there be in the sound level?
Uh, the newer units are actually typically quieter. We can always provide, uh, acoustic, um, enclosures around any compressors that go up on top of them, uh, as opposed to doing any kind of screening around them. Uh, but the, the locations of the new units are gonna go on the exact location of the existing units.
And, and where's that? The three that then will be replaced?
Yeah, so I don't have a, a roof plan shown here. Um, I don't, again, it would be great if I was there with a laser pointer. I can kind of, kind of show a little bit. Um, but on the backside, there are three units, say, you know, if you're looking at the plan, um, if, if we can go back to A3 on the plan.
Correct.
So if we're looking at the enclosures there, you see the, uh, the three play areas? You can almost imagine that each of the, the rooftop units are, uh, to the left, the left side of the enclosures, like in a line.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Is there any other questions?
Commissioner Braun.
Did I hear correctly that HVAC units that are gonna remove the smell? Did you say that or did I miss the material? The HVAC units are designed to help remove the smell? Or is that, did I hear you wrong?
No, that's correct. There, there's filtration and fresh air intake that mixes the air that actually eliminates the odor and, and, and brings it down to a lesser percentage as if you were just exhausting straight air out of the space. But again, with all of Dr. Putter's implementations inside the space, um, and again, I've, he's a great guy. I actually impromptu visited his, visited his, uh, his site and I was impressed with the way it smelled. It was, it was, it was impressive. I, he has more efficient units that are actually installed. Uh, but just his overall practice and the way he does things there was, was impeccable and I have to commend him on that.
And the sound, um, the sound deafening, um, material or system, is that different than the one that you saw that's in existence now? Is it more robust, the, the sound deafening mechanisms that are proposed here?
Yes, so, so right now, again, there's no ceiling plan shown, but the, the generic default is acoustic ceiling tile. And that's your general two-by-two or two-by-four grid ceiling tile. And people think that, you know, that really mitigates sound. Um, it, it does to a certain extent, but it also does not. Uh, what we're gonna be doing is putting in wall panels, uh, ceiling clouds that actually will absorb the sound as it gets bounced off of the, the exterior walls into the ceiling and back down. Um, it, it's a, it's a, a design that has to be followed through ultimately. Um, but it's, it's part of the plan and, and, and moving forward with the interior work.
And that's different than what the other facilities that you looked at or a little bit more?
The, the Stanford facility?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there's implementations of it, but, um, I'm not saying it's gonna look exactly the same, but we're gonna be going with, uh, a higher approach to what was existing in the Stanford facility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, um, thank you. Um, I have a question just on this HVAC system. And I think you mentioned in your presentation a compressor that kind of mitigates smell perhaps? Is that what you said?
No, I'm sorry. The, the compressor is what makes the noise.
Okay, sorry.
So we, there are certain, you can, essentially putting a, a jacket around it will actually help mitigate the sound.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I guess if something happens to the HVAC system, would it permeate some kind of smell in the neighborhood? What would, what would happen?
Uh, as, as far as the unit like shutting down or, or?
Shutting down, something, and something freak happens, I, I don't know. Yeah.
I mean, if it shuts down, then it's not working. Um, ultimately, that's gonna kind of be inside and you have other units that'll help, um, kind of be a redundant unit, if you will. So redundancy is, if you have three units in that space, one goes down, the two other will make up the, the work for it. But, um, you know, if all three go down, then that's a, that's an issue. But that would be something that a backup generator would help, uh, to, to bring back to life, you know? So if one goes down, that would have to be fixed, but you have two to back it up. So that's the idea of redundancy, um, on the HVAC side of things.
Thank you.
Mr. Monarch, could you, um, I stepped out briefly, uh, describe, or can you describe how the, uh, what are they called? Uh, the outdoor enclosures, what's, um, are, is it just gonna be a fence and a, uh, what'd you say, a roof, tin roof?
Uh, yeah, the idea was that, you know, you, you put in, uh, footings, you put in posts and kind of the way a standard, um, vinyl paneled fence is installed, um, that would be the, the fence enclosure. Uh, as far as the roof structure, we'll have to provide, uh, more detail into the, the construction drawings to, to accommodate for that. Um, but essentially what that does is it's gonna cup in the sound, like, so if you're, you know, the sound kind of hits it and kind of wraps back around into the space. But again, I can let Eric from the, the, the sound, uh, engineering study, he can, he can be more of, uh, assistance and answering that question, I believe.
Okay, and as, I mean, as you see it though, with this roofing structure over the enclosures, would there be a gap between the fence and the roof or would the roof kind of go over it like you would expect? Maybe, um, I don't know, a garage almost?
Yeah, we can most certainly design it, um, to, to overlap. We can, there's multiple ways that we can design it. Um, I always like to say there's, you know, 10 ways to do one thing. Um, we were gonna do this in the most appropriate way to make it, you know, um, like, all the precautionary measures are being taken care of. You know, there's no reason to leave a four-inch gap around the perimeter of it because that, that'll actually essentially take away everything that the whole structure is doing. So we're not gonna do something that's gonna just wipe away the, the whole pretense of what we're doing here. So yes, the design, although not finished right now, will be, uh, you know, of a, of a quality that will match what we're presenting.
And I, I hope I'm saying the obvious, but I'll ask it anyways. If these outdoor enclosures, could these outdoor enclosures be made permanent fixtures?
Uh, they could, they can be considered that, but they also could be removed at any point in time. Um, I wouldn't say that they're permanent in nature. Um.
No, excuse me, then. Uh, not that as you currently have them with a fence and, uh, shed roof. If, could you, um, you, the architect, or could on this, on this construction site, make these, those walls permanent outside, exterior walls with a roof that's a permanent regular, you know, exterior roof?
Drew, Drew, um, let me jump in here for a second because, because I, I think the chairman is having maybe the same confusion that I had when I first heard about the shed roof. Because, um, and Eric, uh, you're next to me, the sound expert, but you have the fence that comes perpendicular to the ground. The shed roof is attached to the top of that fence, but it does not connect to the building. So you're still outside, but what it does is, as Drew indicated, it takes the sound and circulates its back down. So it is not a shed roof such that you are creating an entire enclosure. And it's not the entirety of the fenced area. It's in those portions that Eric has, has determined are most important for sound attenuation.
Okay, and that's helpful, but I'm, I'm asking, is there any kind of, uh, condition on the premises that prevents you from taking that fenced-in enclosure and just making it in addition to the building?
Understood. Um.
And I assume the answer is?
In terms of floor area ratio, we can do all those things. My guess is, I mean, as you heard Dr. Putter, the last thing he wants to do is, he says, dogs need to be outside occasionally and that, you know, that.
Well, I understand the position. I'm just asking, can it be done?
Okay.
That's why I just wanna make sure that. I suspect the answer is yes, but I want at least, I'm not, I'm not an expert, I'm not an architect.
Okay.
So, Mr. Monarch, could you put in addition, can those fenced-in dog enclosures just be? So, Mr. Monarch, could you put in addition, can those fenced-in dog enclosures just be made additions to the building?
Technically, yes, they can be. Yeah, they, they could be part of an addition as extra impervious coverage and, um, you know, part of the FAR. I don't think that was our that wasn't our intention with the, the way it's, it's laid out, but I think we have enough, uh, impervious coverage to, to do that. I would let Manny speak to that. But I think we, I think technically speaking, that would be okay.
Here's some information.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Monarch? Mr. Monarch, anything further? I don't know where we left off, what question, where you were with questions.
I, I think I'm good. I think I answered them all.
Okay. Any other questions then? Nope, turning off?
All right, our last presenter, Eric Miller Klein, who is our sound expert.
Uh, Eric Miller Klein, you want my whole address, or just?
Yep.
Okay, uh, 11514 Dayton Avenue North, Seattle, Washington. Um, so I'm from Tenor Engineering Group. I think the slide deck is in there. Okay. Not yet. Um, so I'll just start on the intro while we're getting started. So I'm from Tenor Engineering Group, the principal of acoustical engineering. Um, I have a PE in acoustical engineering from the state of Oregon, which is the only state that actually has acoustical PE. Actually, the professor at the University of Hartford is registered also in the state of Oregon. We all have to register in the state of Oregon if we want to do that certification. Also by the Institute of Noise Control Engineers, board certified. And my firm is also part of the National Council of Acoustical Consultants. So the reason I say that is all of those different organizations and standards and groups that participate in have very strict canons of ethics. And so that's something I take very seriously in writing this. I know I've been reading a lot of the documentation. I just want to make it very clear. We take our engineering very, very seriously and every aspect of the design and approach in that process. Dr. Putter reached out to us because we successfully worked with Dogtopia all over the United States on successful both interior and exterior applications. Part of our process when we work with, um, a prospective doggy daycare or vet is to evaluate their, their site and give them a go, no-go kind of approach, right? It's just like, is this even going to be feasible in this location? Do you have distance? What are your feasible heights of fences for certain properties, right? If it's on a shared property line, the limitations are six feet. So we'll look at that as part of the design solution. So in this case, we were looking at it, and in this case, we also had more variables in terms of flexibility, in terms of the height of the, of the barriers because of it being inside and not on a shared property line. And so, yeah, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So he reached out to us, we went through also dozen different scenarios to try to see with the different numbers of dogs that he had proposed, could we make the four outdoor areas work? We were looking specifically at the Connecticut code for noise, and one of the things unique to Connecticut code is you have two parts of that. In Fairfield, you've adopted that code as it comes to daytime, and you have some slight variations for nighttime. But because we're not really having nighttime operations for outdoor activities except for a one-on-one dog walk, we didn't get into the nighttime application for that single hour. We're looking at the average activity over the course of an hour, and the way we did that is based on research that we've done for Dogtopia, looking at existing facilities, actually documenting the noise from outdoor play. Uh, one of the things that's really unique about dogs that I think we tend to get sort of struck, stuck on is that when you have more dogs playing outside, they get quieter, whereas kids, the more kids outside, the louder they get. So we just assume the more, the louder they're going to be. And what we generally are finding is that dogs tend to be the loudest when they're by themselves, when they want attention, when they want something. And they don't usually want something when they're playing with their friends. Um, and so that's what we've generally found is that the noise levels in outdoor play areas, when they're actually accompanied by lots of other dogs, in a controlled, monitored environment, tends to be quieter, not louder. Um, and that's true for doggy daycares as well as dog parks and things like that. You can find all kinds of, of videos that show that. Unfortunately, with, when you're talking about like dogs and dog noise, it's also something that's very understudied. And part of that goes back to just the history of acoustics in the United States. There's been no federal funding for acoustic research since 1981. And that, it sort of has just, you know, waterfalled our whole industry, and so we just don't have the resources to do all kinds of research. So people ask very difficult questions, and we have to do a lot of these on a little bit more of a case by case basis. So we have to use empirical studies and the research that we do with individual owners, operators, to determine some of these impacts. Um, and so what we found is working through those 12 different scenarios, that the average noise from the dogs barking would be in compliance with the residential noise code to all the adjacent neighbors. Now, that's not to say you will never hear a bark, but the advantage of understanding that is that, you know, a peak bark, what we found today, we did some additional measurements on site today. Measured for eight hours at a few different points, just to understand a little bit better what's going on on that property. Our initial assessment did not include long-term monitoring. It was only doing the computer model that you see and some spot measurements completed by a third party. And so we were using those to just understand, hey, what was traffic noise at this site? Mostly, and the reason we were looking at traffic noise was not to say, hey, this site is noisy, but instead to say, how quiet do we need dog barks to be in relation to code to make it so that it wouldn't be also a nuisance? There's obviously, there's two, two levels of, of noise impacts here. You have the noise impact as it relates to code and the, the nuisance component of that. So the, what we found today, in addition to what we'd seen previously from our model, was that there is a decent amount of, of contribution of traffic noise from post-road. You can also consistently hear Interstate 95 all along the south and east-west property lines, as well as the occasional train pass both from a Celo and, you know, local transit. One of the unique things in terms of the way we did our analysis is that while we acknowledged what traffic noise was, we didn't take into consideration the allowance for Connecticut code, which says if it's louder at a site, either 55 or even some variable of that, because if you're saying measuring 55, in order to actually measure 55 at a property line, the background noise level has to be 10 less than that. So for anybody in the future to say, hey, you're 55 or louder, they would actually have to show that background noise without dogs would be 45 or less. Otherwise, we need to account for the contribution of background noise from traffic and other activities. And so with that in mind, Connecticut has adopted this allowance of, hey, you can be five decibels louder than the ambient level of the site. We didn't include that allowance in our assessment, but we did find that on the east and west property lines, which are the nearest to the outdoor play areas, it was 57 average throughout the day today. Um, and then at the far south property line, it was 55 average throughout the day. The quietest hour for each of those was 56 on the east and west and 54 to the south. And so there, if you did a strict reading of the code, you could say that would allow us to be 62 to the east and west and as much as 59 to the south. We did not include that in our assessment or plan to design to that threshold. We're still designing to 55, which is the code. Um, another layer of the code is actually noting that there's a, a peak allowance of 80 decibels. And that means that a car horn, which actually, traffic noise is exempt, if you didn't know that. So somebody, a neighbor making noise and something that, that kind of has a loud impact to it is allowed to be up to 80 as a residential property. From a commercial property, um, from a commercial property to commercial property is allowed to be 100. Our study, as well as the, the neighbors consultants, also verified that none of the barks would exceed that 80 threshold as noted by Connecticut code. So we were meeting all those. We also found today that an ambulance that passed by the site was actually 75% louder than what our predicted dark, dog barks would be at this location, and most of the train passes were comparable.
When you say you measured the sound barks at 80, what do you mean by that? What barks when?
Yes, so the 80 is, is kind of like a clap, right? Like the peak of my clap. Whereas the code that's 55 is the crowd clapping for a long period of time, essentially for an hour. But the loudest clap can be 80 under the way the code is written. It says a max, an L-max impulse. And it's saying that that peak value, when that one clap, really loud clap happens, that's allowed to be 80 at all the adjacent property lines.
Okay.
So, well, one of the things that we were really, you know, clear about in our study was showing where we got information from, what assumptions that we made in terms of how loud the dogs were barking. These are all conservative values. The value that we used for a single bark for that L-max was actually based on interior measurements from dogs that were crated. Um, the exterior values that we used to predict the 21 continuous dogs barking. And the one thing we like to note here too is that when you're talking about dogs barking over time, there is sort of something happens, then there's a dead time, and something happens, and there's dead time. And then sort of all the combination of those are adding up, becomes that value that we're talking about to me 55. The other thing is, just saying you have more dogs and that's going to be louder, that's actually not really what happens. What happens is that they become louder over time, but they don't become louder in, in, in a single moment, because it's not like they're choir. They don't all sing together. They're not on a beat. They're happening, you know, in, in sort of response to each other. And so it's that layering of sound that over the period of an hour, that's where you get that raised overall level. But the, the actual individual levels are, are not increasing. And so that's why with more or less dogs, the, the actual measured sound level will be different. But it's more of how regularly they're happening in the context of that, that effort. So we, we outlined sort of what our assumptions were to, to come up with our solutions. Yeah, go ahead. Um, and what, like I said, we were comparing to the code. We did not allow for the five-decibel allowance to show that we were in compliance. Instead, we were designing to the strict commercial to residential compliance, as well as, as we've noted, as well as the neighbors consultant found, that the, the actual impulse values also met. To assume that the impulse, that impulse would happen continuously for an hour is not really realistic. Like even somebody clapping, you can't actually clap continuously for an hour. There's going to be natural gaps. And the same thing for dogs. And the advantage that we have when we work with, you know, doggy daycares and, you know, Dr. Putter's staff is that they have administrative controls over what happens with their, their dogs. You know, like I said, we've done a couple dozen of these different facilities all over the United States, and we've had zero that have gone to litigation. And what, why I say that is that's an important thing to think about, is that why you have so many bad stories about dog noise and why you see litigation and all these things is the industry is not required to do the types of studies that you see here today. And so Dr. Putter recognized this was going to be a challenge from the get-go, and that's why he reached out to us to do this process. Acoustics is not legislated very much in the United States. There's not a requirement to do these studies. You, it's all voluntary. Um, it's only usually a complaint-driven type of code. Like, once there's a problem, hey, let's fix it, and maybe that involves city councils, lawyers, things like that.
Mr. Peterson, these materials, have they been provided to us already in our record?
Yeah, this was on December 26th.
Okay, is that, that's part, all part of the report that you?
No, that's their, that's the, the neighbors report. Sorry, that, that, that came out like six hours ago today.
I called you.
If I may, but Chairman, the applicant's report is contained in the materials that are linked on the agenda, but I have hard copies of both acoustic reports for all commissioners.
Okay.
That, the one you just opened, that's, that's the one.
That's yours, that's why I couldn't find what I was looking for.
Yep.
And, uh, what about, uh, this, uh, PowerPoint?
That's, yeah, PowerPoint, is the PowerPoint within your report or?
It's just, it's a summary of everything that's in the report. There's nothing new in it. And it's, it was provided to staff.
PowerPoint is self?
Yes, this is your, this is your staff having it on USB.
Oh, we just need a copy of that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so what you're seeing now here, and I think it's kind of been alluded to by a couple different other presenters today, is a summary of the noise control plan. What I want to stress too is our report kind of highlights a few of the different scenarios that we looked at. Um, we did look at over 10 different scenarios to see like, hey, if we did a six-foot fence, eight-foot fence, in these locations, 10-foot, and so on. And, and with these four different play areas, we found that we did have to do a pretty substantial noise control plan to meet the goals to all the different neighbors. And we understand that like, there's a lot of activity happening here. We understand that this is a high noise impact. We also want to make sure it's clear too is that we also see that noise tends to be the catch-all when people are concerned about projects. And we want to make sure it's clear that there's a way to evaluate this, which is what we've done, to come up with both the noise control plan and verify and validate that it's going to be effective. So just a quick summary, you know, the only fence that would be shorter than 10 feet is the one that's actually facing post-road for the northwest play area. And this drawing is a little bit twisted, so in this case, the left-hand side would be post-road. Then that northwest play area on the, the, on the, sorry, west, would be 10-foot as it relates to the commercial property, but once it turns and has a more of a line of sight to that residential property that's actually facing, I think, SFSK, right, is the street?
Yep.
Um, that one would be a 12-foot shed. And so the, at the bottom, there's sort of a diagram for that shed, and it kind of goes back to your question earlier, Chairman, that, yes, the idea with the shed is that it's, it's cantilevered over the space. It's going to have posts that are supporting it, and it will go over by a few inches so that there's not, there's an overlap, so that the edge of the fence and the shed come to a point at the top. So also that snow can, can be easily brushed off of it into the roadway. And so the idea here, and that, it doesn't actually have to be a shed. We've, we went with the shed because we wanted it to be something where they could actually get some protection from rain or snow. It could also just be a 12-foot-high fence. The acoustic proportion of it is actually just its height. It's the geometry of where a dog barks to the height of the barrier and then to a listener. And that's the, the critical thing in terms of this, as well as the, the material that the barrier is made of. We've evaluated, we've made sure that this barrier has 30% more sound transmission loss performance comparative to what we expect to go over it based on sound diffraction. And that's why it was selected with the materials that have been noted. So that's, that's why, so there are some options there. It could be 12-foot flat, but the goal was 12-foot as a shed so that it provides additional benefit for the staff. It doesn't have to be a shed in this case. The same thing for the rear portion.
Question about that?
Yep.
So is there, there's no benefit, you know, to the way the roof is pitched? You know, so it doesn't help defray the noise?
But no, the top height of it's more important. I, you know, like, some of the comments have been made, and, and that's part of why it's important for our industry to be involved in some of these conversations. I mean, I, I hate to kind of call Manny out, but like, the trees are not going to do a whole lot for acoustics. Like, they're a little bit, but we're talking about like, less than 5%. Um, now, there has been a study done at the University of Hartford where they found, um, years ago, at this point, it's probably like 30 years ago, when Connecticut started adding more highway noise barriers, because you guys for a long time just had like the open, sort of rolling sides. Um, and people complained about traffic noise regularly, and so they put up the highway noise barriers. And the University of Hartford went back and assessed them and like, yeah, they give about 40% noise reduction. It's not this huge amount of noise reduction, but it's something, right? And once they, and then, but they interviewed the homeowners and they said, oh, it's, you know, 100 times better. And they said, really? They said, yeah, because no one knocks on my door to ask to use my phone at night. And it's like, ah, it wasn't really the noise. It was, and this was before cell phones, obviously, but it was that you're like, so there's other ramifications. So in this case, like, not seeing it, and also in this case, not having the lights that were there previously from the auto shop and things like that also would provide some additional benefit. But acoustically, we didn't account for any of the fences at the property line because some of them are chain links, some of them are feeder, like, they're varying. And so we didn't provide any additional noise reduction in our analysis of anything that was happening at the shared property line. That's not to say that at some point, people couldn't add a more solid, consistent fence all the way around to provide some additional benefit. But
Somebody's cellphone?
So that, so any, everything else that's along the south and east, and east portion of the outdoor play area would be a 10-foot-high fence, um, except for the, the dividers between the play areas would be a six-foot fence. Um, and that, we actually did analysis and found that if you just did chain link for those dividers or a three-foot, it actually wasn't enough. We needed that additional benefit as it related for the east play areas all the way to the west and from the west play areas all the way to the east. And as, you know, you're aware, the, the two closest properties are, you know, on the east and west. We did find kind of to one of the other questions, I can't remember which councilman asked, but it's about, on average, about 70 to 80 feet from the shared property line to the nearest structure. So none of, but unfortunately, our colleague that analyzed our report made some assumptions and didn't account for that additional 80 feet when they looked at second-story windows for some of the other properties. So there's some, there's some differences there. We were finding about 20% difference. If we assumed their calculations were right, they were off by about 20%, not accounting for that additional distance. So there's a number of different layers to this, and we, we do plan to do a written response to the neighbors' experts so that it's clear on how we think that relates to the report that we've provided.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions, because you mentioned that you had done additional measurements and gotten some data. So we'll get something in writing that summarizes that data?
Correct.
Okay, great.
I think that, yeah, I mean, this one's just a summary. Yep.
So the PVC, was that material chosen for sound attenuation? And are there other materials that would provide better sound attenuation for the fencing?
Not, not much better. I mean, what it ends up being with attenuation of, for barriers, is that you have to have a minimum amount of weight. And that weight usually ends up being about one to one and a half pounds per, per foot. PVC fits that. It, it tests out a little bit more than one, and it has good performance in the higher frequencies, which is what we're most concerned about for dog barking. Um, actually, the fact, I was kind of going back to that, you know, CD, DOT, the fact they make them out of concrete is actually more of a lobbying thing. is actually more of a lobbying thing than acoustical. Like making something out of six-inch CMU is not any better than making it out of half-inch plywood. It's just that, yeah, the CMU and concrete lobby have done a good job of saying, this is what we need to do. And some of that is, in this case, part of that is that it's longevity. We don't, like the materials that work well, that are comparable are like cement board, plywood, and those are not quite as durable with dogs compared to PVC. And so that's part of why they would prefer to use PVC and we've validated that it would work for us in the acoustical performance.
And are there additional treatments that could be added to the interior of the fencing that would make any difference?
I mean, it ends up, you know, making about five to ten percent difference. And the other challenge with that is that you're now getting into situations where you have to be really cognizant of where the height of those materials are. Because if you put something, most materials that are good for sound absorption, which is what you're talking about, are things that are soft. So then you have to enclose them inside of perforated metals, other things like that. And you can't have them too low so that the larger dogs can get to them and chew them. So in general, we've steered away from those because, you know, because we're not finding that much benefit. That's actually why in this case, we did the higher fences rather than doing those materials because there hasn't been, I can do an analysis on higher barriers. The analysis on how effective are absorptive materials in exterior environments are, it's not really a vetted science. Like it's something that we do out of like, well, we think it'll work, but we don't have great data to say and verify that it does work. So that's part of why we were looking at things that we could verify and validate, which we can do with a barrier. Those materials are not always as clearly as effective in an open environment. In an enclosed environment, they are like Drew was talking about.
Which I guess leads me to kind of a theme I've been bringing up. Would there be better sound attenuation if these enclosed areas were additions to the building? Where you can do something like you did in Dogtopia?
Yeah, if they're fully enclosed. I mean, you're right. If you're inside the building, you're going to get more loss than you will if you have something that's open on the top. That's absolutely true. Like, I mean, that's.
Well, just the exterior walls, you can add things to them. The soft materials can probably be put into the exterior wall. You've got the roof. That can, all the extra materials can be put into the roof to keep the sound enclosed. I would expect, and correct me if I'm wrong, that a full, you know, a permanent structure where these dog areas would be, would be optimal from a sound attenuation than what's currently proposed?
Yes and no. So the reason.
Go with yes. All right. Tell me what the yes is.
Yes, if you fully enclose it and there's like no gap and it is now an add-on to the building.
That's what I'm talking about.
You can get better acoustic attenuation. Now, the no is that now we have to add two to three more air handling units to manage that extra heat load inside of those and cooling loads.
You're talking about AC and HVAC stuff?
Correct. And so depending on where those are installed, how they're installed, because now depending on how you decide, if you decided it's a greenhouse, those heat loads are really high. So then it's a risk for Dr. Putter's staff and the dogs because getting above eighty is happening, you know, in mid-March.
Not sure, but I would expect heat to be there for a shed roof, you know, to get above eighty degrees.
Well, this shed roof is only two feet deep. This is like, it's two feet tall and two feet deep.
But still acting like a sauna, I would think, no?
Well, I mean, it's kind of, it's like a, it's like saying, like one of the bus stops is a heat sink. I mean, you're not, it's not really, there's enough airflow that you're not really getting, you know, this is also at ten feet up.
Please make sure the chairman understands the two sections where the shed is proposed.
Yeah, it's only on that far west side. So in the pink, that's the only spot that we're showing the shed roof.
On the right side of what you're showing, the three that are up and down?
No, 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 just those rectangles, the pink rectangle.
Oh, I see.
On the west side. Does that make sense?
No, now I, okay, that makes more, yes, it does make.
So they're really just extensions of those two sections of fence.
Okay, all right. So that takes care of that whole sauna thing, so to speak. Okay.
So there's no roof on the rest of it?
No.
That's kind of where my confusion was.
It's all open. No, sorry if that was confusing because I know we've been using the term enclosure today, but it's really just a fenced barrier, outdoor play area with two shed roofs for a little bit of rain protection, but primarily to extend the roof up to twelve feet or the barrier to twelve feet for those specific high-risk locations.
All right, you see the west view and the southwest view, how it's open. Okay.
And the reason that we have to go higher on that side compared to the east side is that you have two play areas now that are exposed to that west property. Whereas on the east property, you only have one essential play area. It's like that one long play area.
Going back to my question, you said yes and no. I think the yes is if we made it like a Dogtopia-type thing, fully enclosed, that's optimal. What was the no aspect again?
Well, it's just that you're, now you have to add like heating and cooling.
Oh, the heating and cooling.
All these other things that we have to make. It's just not, that's not part of it.
Well, we already have HVAC that's going to be there.
But not enough for that.
Well, of course not, but it's going to be, now you're going to have maybe what? Let's just say three extra units.
Potentially.
It's going to just add, it's going to, I don't think it's going to add anything to it.
I mean, it's, it's a lot of complexity and it also gets away from having the outdoor play area. So that's the downside, like trying to balance the outdoors.
Obviously, the outdoor, I understand the outdoor play area argument. I get that. The balance is.
But in terms of strict acoustics, noise control, yes. An enclosed, a Dogtopia that's fully enclosed with no outdoor play area does perform better to neighbors than one that has an outdoor play area.
And now you add, let's just say you add the extra, let's say, three or five units. How much extra noise are you adding when you already have those type of units on site?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely controllable, especially with the distance that we have to all the adjacent houses.
The newer units are quieter and all that stuff. But if you have three units HVAC condensers and you add three more, those extra three are probably not going to add too much, any noise.
They add fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent extra noise, okay. Already there's something that's known and controllable, the HVAC unit.
That is a true statement.
Commissioner Braun?
It's the magenta portion, so that is a shed roof, but it's very narrow.
It's two feet deep and two feet tall.
And it goes from ten feet to twelve feet.
Correct.
And the purpose is simply noise. That's it.
Correct.
And it doesn't cover the whole amount. It just sort of keeps, has the noise bounce back. It doesn't go to the neighbors' property.
I mean, all barriers are essentially, yeah, acting as a reflector to sound.
Now, would it help with the rest of the whole length of it if you did the whole thing along the whole length of the roof?
Well, since we were already meeting code, we needed it in this case from our noise control plan to meet code to the west. We didn't need it everywhere else. It would provide another like, you know, again, ten or fifteen percent. So it's not like it's a huge night and day difference. It's like, it's a huge cost for a small difference in.
Oh, you mean that roof thing, it adds a lot to the cost?
Yes, correct. So the idea is our noise control plan, the way we approach noise control plans is I'm trying to do it as efficiently as possible, right? When you buy a car, you don't want a tank, even though you do want a tank to be safe, but like you need it to be fuel-efficient. So it's got to be an engineered product that is as safe, as fuel-efficient and meets the cost that you have for the project.
But it could be sort of like a compromise thing instead of enclosing, which would be much better to reduce noise. This would be less expensive than enclosing those things and making them part of the building and allow it to be outdoors, but still have more noise reduction.
I mean, there's definitely opportunities to, we could explore some of those different.
The chart you have, the colored chart, that shows what your estimates are for the noise?
Correct.
And that's based, explain again, what was it, what are the facts that that's based on? Because obviously this isn't built yet.
Yeah, it's a 3D computer model of all of the different spaces, dogs all barking at a height of three feet, which is actually only the large dogs.
How many dogs are, assume twenty to thirty?
Twenty-one dogs actively barking, so thirty-five dogs, but twenty-one dogs actively barking.
Can we put that chart up again? Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
It's hard to see. So you have little dots around the property, the proposed property?
Correct.
They're all green towards the back. That means that that relates to.
Well, the dots on the right are just, were just picked green just to show those positions. It's the chart on the left that highlights all of those positions and then the predicted noise level at those locations.
So whatever's green matches green in the chart?
No, the table is the predicted values. The chart is just showing you where those positions are in the space.
We'd have to look at a close-up to see what numbers.
Yeah, and it's in the, it's in the hard copy report that you have too, so.
The PowerPoint?
No, both of these, both of these pictures are in that document. Yeah.
So that's based on, I guess you feed into the model similar noise attenuation structures and systems to what you're proposing?
Yes.
And then you have the numbers drawn out then?
Yeah, we ran, we ran ten different scenarios of the computer model. We also just, we did pick those ten locations. We could actually do a prediction in this case to any first-story, second-story window within, within the, sort of that footprint that you see there. You know, we were just picking the property line edges because that's really what code is based on. It's not based on.
I can't find, is it in this package? I can't find it.
There's a hard copy coming down the table, sorry.
Kathy, it was in your master packet that was on the agenda?
I got it.
But here's another hard copy.
That's right, that's right, that's right. It doesn't matter, yeah. So just reading some of the letters from people who talked about the Stanford one, they were saying it's just, it's horrible. So I don't know the answer to that.
I don't have any data on the Stanford one. I did not have a chance to work with Dr. Putter on that facility. I've worked on other doggy daycares and like the only ones that I've had to do a presentation like this for a council in Arizona had a similar sort of, a lot of people that were really upset. Everyone said it's going to be horrible. Three hundred people showed up to the meeting and we identified that only three homes would even be able to hear a dog bark. And then they did a one-year like allowance on it and then one year later, they came back and said, hey, how's it doing? And only one neighbor showed up just because he was upset about it and everyone else was like, no, it's fine. So.
This is all in decibels, right?
Correct.
And so it's for constant noise, not like one bark?
So we evaluated both, but yeah, what you're seeing there, that is the average. So what we did is we've done multiple studies for outdoor play areas at other doggy daycares. We took the loudest fifteen minutes of the multiple days of outdoor playing and we predicted twenty-one dogs doing that constantly for an hour to see like how well would our barrier work to meet compliance in there. We also have a chart in there later on that talks about the single loudest bark. They're like super agitated, like play with me now, you know, biggest, you know, dog you've ever seen, you know, barking. And that was like still meeting the instantaneous LMAX impulse value eighty at all of the adjacent properties as well.
So I'm looking at figure six, okay? Since they're proposing a ten-foot fence without the roof thing on it, figure six, scenario nine, predicted noise impact from twenty-one dogs with a ten-foot fence, but now it's got like a magenta roof thing over it. So this has like a yellow area going out, not as far as the actual houses. Those things are houses, those little squares, not property lines, those are houses. So it says the yellow shows the decibel level would be like between sixty to sixty-four.
That's correct.
What is that comparable to if we're sitting in the room here? Everybody yelling or clapping or?
Your voice to, well, probably actually to me.
I know your voice. What's my?
Yeah, your voice at my ear is probably about sixty-five to sixty-seven.
But this would be like twenty dogs at my voice level?
What's that? But that's still on the property line. So you'd actually have to be trespassing to like hear that value.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the yellow doesn't go to the houses. You're saying people in those houses wouldn't hear anything?
I'm saying that like on a normal day, if you had your windows closed, you wouldn't even know there was barking. What would happen is, in my experience, on the two cases where people had complained about dog barking, when I went out and did a study, a follow-up study, each instance was actually another neighbor. Because the thing is with dog barks, it's going to travel about a hundred and fifty feet. That is a given.
A hundred and fifty feet?
A hundred and fifty feet.
That's about half a football field.
Correct. And we're about a hundred.
And that's a distance to those, the houses I'm estimating from where the structure is.
We're about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred, to the buildings, we're actually over almost two hundred to almost the nearest houses.
Okay.
We're like one fifty to the nearest one to the east, one five to the nearest one to the west, and then two hundred to the ones to the south. And so what it ends up being is that, yeah, like the actual playful activity, you occasionally pick out a single bark, but the neighbor dog that's like left in the yard all day, they're barking all day long and you're like, yeah, I heard a barking, so it must have been spot on. And in our experience, those are the complaints that we investigate and usually we find that it's a neighbor dog who's been out and wants to play, but is left alone. And it's not to say you would never hear a bark. We're just saying that when they're playing, they're not bored and they're not agitated, so they're not just barking the way I think people assume they are based on experiences either with their own dog or, you know, in other scenarios. What we find is that in a play group, especially a monitored play group, the loud barking is usually quickly addressed and it's usually just playful activity with a couple of snarls and a couple, you know, other types of noises. But it's not this peak bark all the time. Because if it is, the staff will address it. Because the other part of that too is if that was actually happening, it would actually be an issue for Dr. Putter that he would actually have hearing loss for his staff. And so then he has other problems he has to deal with. If he was really standing there and they were doing that all day, every hour, that would be the cause. And so we've already evaluated that for other facilities. When we've looked at indoor, like Dogtopia is a good example, when we've looked at their indoor spaces, because we've done full-day assessments of their indoor spaces and we found that the loudest they are is during nap time. The quietest they are is during playtime. The reason that they're loudest during nap time is that they're all put into crates and then they come through and do a cleaning session. And so they all want to get out of their crates because they're like three or four-year-olds being like, you just locked me up without my friends and my toys and you're taunting me. And so that's what we generally see. And so outdoor play tends to be actually as much as fifteen decibels quieter because they're just playing. It's not screaming play like a, you know, a five-year-old. It's sort of engaged play with their friends.
Are you, so I've been talking about noise from the outside structures.
Correct.
Noise from inside, say during nap time. Are you saying none of that noise is going to reach the neighbors where they live or?
No, it's going to be so much lower than the background noise level. So we evaluated that, you know, through the existing walls and through the doors and that's predicted to be seventy-five percent quieter than the existing background noise.
And what's the decibels then from nap time, the loudest time inside?
To the out, to the nearest property?
Like the neighbor's house, which is like.
Would be less than thirty-five, which is why it's not in this study.
Which means they could hear it?
No, it's fifty-five in this neighborhood at the minimum. It's fifty-five decibels. I'm saying that's the ambient. The ambient's like fifty-four to fifty-five.
So if you're at the ambient, you can hear it, but it's not.
If it's below ambient, you cannot hear it. It has to be at least eight decibels louder than ambient for you to even identify it.
So you don't have a chart for what's happening inside the building because no one's going to hear that above ambient noise?
They would not. They would not. Now, I mean, there wasn't like, you know, occasionally when you have certain spectrum of noise, you'll hear it as it relates to things like, you know, if I'm listening, if I'm in my office, I'll hear somebody talking and maybe the sound from outside traffic is actually the same loudness, but I'll hear your voice more clearly than that traffic and that's because of the character of your voice. But those are things that, you know, we can account for and assess in sort of showing compliance with code. And that's, you know, that's the part of here in terms of, you know, we did, based on, once we saw some of the complaints from the neighborhood, we went back and did a rough assessment of what, you know, even just a single bay of the previous car dealership would be with a pneumatic tool. And that would actually be about sixty percent louder than even the dog barks because there's no additional barriers there and those tools are about as loud as, you know, a dog bark. So, you know, we hadn't had, there was obviously no complaints previously. So we're just sort of trying to obviously still be a better neighbor because, you know, it seems like there's a lot higher concern here for dog barks. Although, you know, a lot of neighbors own dogs.
Honestly, I think part of it is not just the sound, but like the dog barking, kind of like a baby crying, it bothers you more than just a sound of cars going by or a train?
I think if it's unmitigated, I would agree. I would agree. I mean, that's, that's the one thing that we found when we do outdoor enclosures like this that we actually find is that it's not that you don't hear the dogs, but it sounds very distant. It now sounds like a dog that's like three blocks away rather than it's right behind your property.
I have another question. So this is based on twenty to twenty-one dogs, but I thought they were going to have possibly thirty-five dogs out.
So we're doing twenty-one dogs of actively barking. We're not assuming that every single dog is actively barking. Because they would not, they would actually do only indoor play if that was the case. If the moment those dogs came out, if every dog was barking the whole time, Dr. Putter's staff would be like, this is not working. They would bring them all back in. So we're doing a more conservative estimate of what's based in reality and this is based on research and studies we've done for a number of different facilities. Assuming that every dog is barking is not also a good.
And just again, so I understand this orange chart, the location is known as HO5 to H15. Those are the houses along the back, right?
No, no, those are all at the shared property line. There's only one that predicts to a second-story house. That's HO5, second floor.
Well, I see. So these squares here are not houses?
Those are, those are points on the property line.
Oh, I thought those were neighborhood houses.
Because code is at the property line. It's not at the houses. So we're getting additional benefit of that seventy to eighty feet, but we didn't account for that in our losses because that's not what the, the code is not built around me impacting your house, me impacting your property.
So just to give an example, like the first line is HO5. That is?
HO5 is the commercial property to the west. HO6 is the corner of the residential property that's to the west. So that, the duplex that's there. And then HR1 underscore second story is the second story of the nearest residential building to the west, which is a duplex.
H12? What's H12 then?
H12. Um, H-twelve is going to be?
Are these defined somewhere in the material here?
Yes. I mean, if you look at- at figure five, you'll see each of those.
I'm- I'm looking, but I can't tell what the-
It shows you about where they are. I can- I can put an address to all of these.
Is H-thirteen one of the residential houses and H-fourteen and H-fifteen?
It's on the- it's on the street side of that. It's on the front of those- in the front of those houses.
Oh, not on the-
But not accounting for the losses of the actual building.
They're rear.
This is their backyards.
Those properties' backyards is along the border.
And that's where you have H-oh-seven, H-oh-eight, and H-oh-nine.
Oh, 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 now I understand. So, you're- you're taking a measurement at the back of the yard and then at the front of their-
We're predicting to those locations.
Predicting, rather, okay. And the house is those boxes, those white boxes?
Correct, yeah.
And what's that green zone in the- in the- in the drawing versus the yellow zone in the drawing? The green, the dark green?
The dark green is- is under the legend of like, that's fifty-five to fifty-nine.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And then, light green is fifty to fifty-four decibels.
I got it.
Why would it be lower decibels closer?
We have a- we have a queue.
Um, no, it's just, you're looking at the greens differently. So, the darker green is higher decibels.
Okay.
Lighter green is lower decibels.
Okay, thank you.
So, Commissioner Bremen, Commissioner Corcelio, then Commissioner Harrison.
Try to be brief because the hour's getting late. Uh, you, uh, you did a noise control plan for Dogtopia in the trademark building, which we approved, right?
Yes.
And that had a very robust, uh, noise protection plan, e- even from adjoining residential apartments, okay? So, um, I'm not asking you to go from memory, but, um, that, uh, what we approved, uh, required that there be, uh, no more than four decibels above ambient in adjacent spaces and no greater than forty decibels in adjacent residential spaces. Um, and there was no outdoor play area, obviously, in Dogtopia as we have established. Um, how do you compare the noise control that you're, uh, proposing or that you've been able to achieve with, uh, SpotOn to what- what you're able to achieve with Dogtopia?
I mean, they're completely different because one's an interior environment and one's an exterior environment. The other difference too, that was critical for that Dogtopia to be successful is that it has apartments directly above its play areas. So, that's why you'll see that four DVA allowance, which is an LMAX as it relates to the average, um, which is actually essentially what we're also kind of thinking about here is like, what is our average versus what are the impacts of the actual activities that are happening? But that- you- they're kind of apples to oranges because you- when you're looking at only interior, that's just very different than exterior and- and you can't really compare them. Because like, an interior environment, yes, you'll turn on your TV, but once you turn your TV off and you go to bed, I can't be louder than whatever's happening in your bedroom for you to fall asleep. If you hear barking while you're sleeping, now we've- we've lost it, the whole performance. And so, that's a completely different scenario. Then, once we get an exterior environment, now we're talking about property lines and environmental noise codes. And so, those are not quite apples to apples in terms of its approach. And, you know, the noise control approach is different too because like, I have, when I'm looking at a wall or a floor-ceiling assembly, that's purely construction on what I get on the performance here. In this case, how much you hear is a- is a component of how much background noise is happening from existing transit, as well as the distance, um, and the way that we had designed noise controls, um, and the topography.
So, they're different in a couple of ways. One is that Dogtopia's, uh, noise control had to be much more stringent because of the adjacent bedroom to the play area.
Yep. Well, they didn't have outdoor.
No, no, right. And- and the second is that you're dealing with noise attenuation between interior structures as opposed to noise attenuation from an outside str- uh, play area, which you're trying to attempt to do with- with, uh, fencing and shed roofs and perhaps with vegetation. But, um, essentially, you- you're not able to achieve that- the noise attenuation that you achieve with Dogtopia because it's a different program.
Yeah. I mean, exactly. Like, Doc- that- the way to think about that, Dogtopia, is it's like, you're going into the sound studio, right? And it's like, we're gonna fully control what we're doing there versus doing a recording at an amphitheater, right? Like, at the amphitheater, I've gotta kind of account for everything. I'm still gonna do what I can, but it's still an outdoor environment. Whereas, in that case, it's like, it's the studio. I can control it down to a very fine level of detail.
Last question. Could you, uh, i- install monitors of decibel levels within, um, parts of the SpotOn facility that would be calibrated to tell you how loud a sound would be, um, perceived in surrounding residential properties?
Um, there's- it'd be tough. There's- there's some ways to potentially do that. The best way to do that actually would be to determine the maximum levels at- at their outdoor play areas as they relate to the adjacent properties. And that is something that they could potentially do. I mean, in the short term, because they already have, um, cameras and that also have audio, they could also monitor their activities and record that. And so, if there was ever a complaint, they could see, "Is that one of our dogs?" Or is that, um, somebody else's dog based on a timestamp? But yeah, there's- there are potential ways. Unfortunately, there's not great optic shelf systems for that, but they're- those are actually used for transportation, like, construction noise monitoring. There's some systems like that. So, there might be some ways to- to do that.
Just to follow up. So, you could figure out what the maximum, uh, decibel level would be at a particular point? And then, you could calibrate a meter potentially to tell you when the dog barking is achieving that impermeable level?
There's a- yeah, you could potentially do that and it would be probably like, right- right on that fence line. Um, they could potentially do that and they could go to a, like, an app or a text message or something like that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corcelio.
Yeah, I- so, I think- I think there were two hypotheticals that were thrown out, uh, to you of- of things that could potentially be done where I believe you had said for each of them, it would make, you know, maybe a ten to fifteen percent, uh, difference in- in sound levels. So, maybe individually, they wouldn't make that much of a difference. But I wonder if you could come back to the- to the commission with, uh, examples of things that could further reduce the sound because combine those two and then you're talking about a twenty to thirty percent reduction in sound.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't really- you wouldn't combine them and be able to get that, you know, in this case. Um, like, you know, one of the things that, to be aware of too with- with sound is that, uh, you- you, in terms of listening, when you go in your car and you turn it up one dial, that's probably fifteen percent or more. So, it's so subtle that most people can't hear a difference, which is why we tend to not do those things unless it's really noticeable, right? If you built it tomorrow and someone's like, "It's too loud." If I came back and made everything twelve feet, nobody would hear the difference. Because they would be like, "It doesn't sound any different to me." Like, it was ten- and I'd be like, "No, I measured it. It's ten percent different." You won't hear the difference. Like, we have to have a substantial enough difference.
I understand. I'm not- I'm not saying one thing that could reduce it ten percent, but if you're combining, I mean, thirty percent is thirty percent or fifty percent is fifty percent. So, I'm asking if you combine, if there are other measures that could be put in place, given that it sounds like noise is the top issue here.
We're happy to take a look, yes.
Yeah, we can look at it. I mean, there's not a lot more, but we can definitely go back and look at it again.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this information. Um, I had a question. You- you did Dogtopia here in town? And I know we've talked about it a few times tonight. Now, what kind of- have you done any follow-up with any of the residents? Is this totally soundproof? Because I've- I've heard undoubtedly that maybe it's not soundproof, so?
I mean, nothing- soundproof is a- is a terrible term. It's a marketing term that's used by people who sell products. It's like saying your car is waterproof.
Yeah.
Drive it out into Long Island Sound and tell me how waterproof your car is, right? So, it's- it's not really a- an accurate term. Um, you know, honestly, for those, we- we lean on the owners because usually the difference between when they occupy it, um, they'll- usually somebody gets back to us. If that's an apartment community, I'm pretty sure somebody would've said something to the landlord and had that address. I haven't heard anything about it being a problem, but, um, that's not to say that somebody hasn't. I have had projects where, you know, things haven't been built correctly and we've had to come back and do fixes. Um, you know, just, it depends on, you know, what the requirements were and then how the responses have been to those.
So, since your engagement with Dogtopia, you haven't heard any complaints or issues or had to come back to fix anything?
No, and I'm working on a couple other facilities with that same owner group, so I haven't- they didn't say anything about that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, in your projections, because I think- I think they're in there and I just want you to, um, help me out identifying them. For your projections for this use, this outdoor- the outdoor use as, uh, as proposed to us, for the closest residential person in their backyard, um, what would the average decibel be for that- for the twenty-one dogs that you've projected?
It would be fifty-five decibels or less.
Okay, and that's-
And that's not including any of the fences, if there's a solid fence for any of those properties. That's assuming the chain link.
Their fences.
Their fences.
Okay. And the ambient was what, fifty or fifty-five?
Um, fifty-seven for the east and west properties and fifty-four at the south property line at fifty-four, fifty-five.
Now, that's the- that's the average. Now, you talked about when it was a max or higher than av- what's the max?
I think we found that the east property line was a potential max of like, seventy-two to the west. Um, that's what I'm looking at.
How much today? Do you know that?
Oh, well, the maxes today were all over the place. There was- because I said, there was a- a emergency vehicle.
Now, we're talking maxes for dogs though, right?
Yeah. Um, I think we predicted... It's- it's a- there's a table in here that predicts all the maxes. Yeah, it's on page sixteen, uh, table three. So, at the nearest property line to the west was seventy-one, nearest property line to the east was seventy-two for the loudest single bark. And everything else is in the mid-sixties with the allowable level dedicated as eighty.
What's the- in table three, you said, right?
Correct.
What's the, uh, second column with, um, the red, ninety-four, the ninety-one, et cetera?
Those were based on somebody else's measurements at those property lines of just maxes that happened. Like, right now, it's existing ambient at max.
Existing ambient, okay.
Yeah. We took- we took some additional measurements today. And that, again, the problem with maxes is that, you know, when- if one of the trains goes by and has a squeaky wheel, that's a max.
Yeah.
Right? That's not- that's not what it's- the whole thing that happens.
What column should I look- be- should I be looking at for the dogs?
Um, well, scenarios eleven, twelve, and thirteen and fourteen. Those are all- Because the- each of those scenarios is described in the table above or in the little- the rectangles above.
Okay.
And that's telling you where that loudest dog is. So, scenario eleven is the loudest dog is in the northwest play area. Then, scenario twelve, the loudest dog is in the westernmost south play area. And then, thirteen, the loudest dog is in the middle southern area. And fourteen, the loudest dog is in the easternmost southern area.
All right. And as the table shows, there are gonna be instances where, um, somebody in the surrounding area is gonna hear the max?
There's- yeah, there's a potential for occasionally hearing a max.
Yeah. And we don't- I mean, as a- I assume it's hard to say how often a max is gonna happen.
Yeah. I mean, what we found is that the maxes here are definitely very conservative. I mean, we- when they're actually just going out and playing, we don't see this max. But that's not to say that a dog might come in that, you know, is-
Not so- but you're saying these are conservative estimates?
Correct.
Okay, so they could be higher. Obviously, you can't tell with the frequency.
We expect them to be quieter, not louder.
You expect them?
I'm saying these are conservative estimates.
Conservative means that these are higher than they- what they could otherwise be?
Correct.
That's why. I wanna make sure.
We- we would expect that if we put out meters continually to, um, you know, Councilman Brown's comment, like, we would see numbers that are less than this consistent.
All right, that's fine.
It would be like, one- one day in March, we're like, "Oh, yep, looks like somebody got to that level."
Right. But there's- and there's also no way of projecting or, um, estimating when the maxes are gonna happen, how often they're gonna happen, every ten minutes or things like that. It's just-
I mean, to a certain extent, like, the- the averages that you see already account for these maxes because these maxes are based on that. So, you're not- you can't meet an average that's at a reasonable level if you have too many instances of max. So, if it happens every once a minute, there's no way you're gonna meet the averages and that's what we're-
What's the average based on then?
It's just, it's a time average. It's saying like, all of the events that happen in a period of time, what is the average of those?
Yeah, okay.
And just measured over three hours?
Well, yeah. I mean, the code is all based on a one-hour average. It's a one-hour average.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So, it's taking sound every second and then averaging it over an hour.
But I- I guess- I guess, to your point, the important thing is thirty-five dogs max. I think the testimony is that the frequency of twenty-one dogs, I- well, first of all, the frequency of thirty-five dogs being outside is rare. So, therefore, the- the likelihood of twenty-one dogs barking simultaneously out of those thirty-five is rare. It could only occur during those two, three-hour shifts and only occur, um, when it's above forty and below eighty. And so, you know, the window keeps narrowing.
Uh, we're two of ten. Any questions from the commission? I don't know. I haven't- I don't know where you are in your presentation, but let me just-
Oh, I'm done. No, I'm done. I was- all of this was just questions for you.
Any questions from the commission? Turn it off. Where are you in your presentation?
Uh, we're done, um, with our firm's presentation. Obviously, you know, there's lots of folks who wanna speak.
Well, of course.
Um, I know there's a lot of people here in support, but if the commission were inclined to go a little past ten, we'd rather devote that time to hearing what, um, opponents might say because, you know, you can-
Quiet, please. Quiet, please.
And- and by the way, I'm not- I'm not saying that there wouldn't be another opportunity for opponents to speak.
Oh, no. I mean, we're gonna- we're gonna go as many meetings as needed for the public to be heard, oppose or support, including attorneys, and their- and objections. Um, so, that's not the concern that I have. Um, I don't really wanna continue forward and then limit- I don't- I don't think I've ever can think of a time where I went forward with public comment and limited it to a certain opposing or, um, supporting. So, I don't really feel inclined to do that because it's ten o'clock. You're gonna have additional evidence you're gonna put in, it sounds like?
Uh, we're gonna have a response to the comment.
But you also- no, that's-
Review.
That I remember, but you're also- there are additional, um, uh, no, data that you were gonna-
From today, but that's just in response to theirs anyway, so leave it.
That's fine, but I'm inclined, I mean, your presentation, open, close, whatever, but if you're gonna give more material, almost some of the opinion may be not for you to finish. So, you can present- you can submit it. At least have that option.
Yeah.
And then, we can go on to public comments, knowing that if there's anything else we need.
Well, I- I- I guess there's a part of me that would like to hear what Attorney Crusade has to say and then Attorney Proto and then-
I would pr- yes, in my-
And their sound expert. And then, we can wrap up the entirety of the opposition and then we can do one wholesale rebuttal to all of it.
No, and I agree. Um, my- the custom normally is for, if there are attorneys with- or with experts, uh, who are representing more than one people, or to have the experts themselves to go- to have them go first, so to speak, because it's just, that's the custom with it. And I'd like to hear from their, uh, the competing expert. Um, I don't think we're gonna have any time to do that tonight. That was my point.
Of course, that's- no, no, agreed.
Well, I don't, you know, we'll adjourn for tonight. Um, you can submit- you'll have time to submit your rebuttal and any additional stuff that can be, you know, I guess, open to the public, so to speak. Um, if we have any further questions of you, I mean, if you're telling me you're done, you're done. That's fine. We'll just go to public comment next time too, so.
Right. And- and then, then when we have the opportunity for- to rebut, I'll- I'll do that.
Of course.
You know, what we're trying to avoid is- is this ping-pong match of lawyers' letters and memos.
Got it.
I just wanna hear everything they have to say.
No, that's fine.
Give you one response. That way, we're not, you know, inundating you with tit for tat.
And our data doesn't- isn't planning to affect this report, so.
All right, fair enough. So, um, we will be adjourning tonight, leaving this up- this hearing open. The next scheduled meeting will be two weeks from now. Um, the date escapes me, but right, we're gonna- But we will be doing this on the twenty-fourth. We'll be going right to public comments, having the, uh, probably having the attorneys with experts go first. Any member of the public, any attorney, anybody who wants to submit, um, comments via email, we do read them. I've read them this morning and last night and we'll be re- reading them further. Uh, feel free to do so in the interim. What I would- what I would ask is if you're gonna submit something by email, uh, repeating it or reading it into the record, uh, is not particularly helpful, but there's no prohibition against it. Um, once we get through public comment, as I said, the applicant will have a chance to rebut and then the hearing will be closed. But right now-
Question for you?
Yes, attorney.
January twenty-fourth's hearing. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be in California on January twenty-fourth. So, that hearing will be available before you call in or-
Yeah, we- this is gonna be- this is our- this is our method, uh, from the foreseeable future, is to be a hybrid, remote and in-person. So, you will obviously have that chance. I-
Yeah, I also have to object. I'm also not available on twenty-fourth, so, um, I object to not being here tonight.
Okay. I mean, you- I will con- if you feel free to write a submission, as you said. Um, if you have other objections, you wanna be heard at different nights, we'll deal with it on the twenty-fourth.
Uh, can we have the speaker's name and address?
That would be helpful, yes. Your name?
Sure. Uh, my name is Wells Dixon. I live at two thirty-four Fairfield Place. I oppose the application.
Are you representing anyone other than yourself?
No, no, my family.
No, which is fine, but that's helpful to know.
I should just note for the record, since you asked a question, my, nature of my objections are legal objections, so I would take a legal objection to the, uh, to the application.
Okay. Memo's always helpful, but obviously, as I said, you can do both, so. No, we've hit our curfew, um, considering the length and the amount of public comment that, uh, everybody would go in, so I'm not about to start and allow somebody to go first just to stop in five minutes. It's not, it's not a productive use, we're gonna have to come back a second time, potentially a third time, which is fine.[1770.91]